Yeah, that's pretty good. All right. Hello, Full House. We are ready to get started. So, thank you to all of you who are paying attention. Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. And a hush came over the crowd. Today is July 1st, 2025. This is the City Council's regular agenda. I am calling this meeting to order and giving notice that at this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for discussion or consultation with our attorneys on any item that is listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember House.
President.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand if you're able.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, next up is open call to the public. This allows the council to address us on an item that is not on tonight's prepared agenda. And because it is not on tonight's prepared agenda, council can't ask you questions, answer questions. Each person gets three minutes to speak, and there's a timer here. And if you're wanting to talk to us about something that is on the agenda, that needs to come at the time that we are hearing that agenda item. So, first up, I have Ms. Deb Harris.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, council members. I have a group with me today, and I respectfully request additional time.
Can you have all those members stand up?
Yes.
Great, you've got 10 minutes.
Thank you, I won't take all of that time. I'm speaking not only to the council, but also to the broader Flagstaff community. I want to talk to you about the Southside neighborhood, one of the oldest continuously inhabited neighborhoods in our city. Its boundary stretched from Longtree Road to the east, Milton on the west, the street behind the NAU Dome to the south, and north to the tracks. Many of the homes in Southside are some of the oldest in Flagstaff. Some residents still live in houses built by their grandparents, homes that have been continuously occupied for generations, long before many of the businesses that now surround them. Southside has a rich and vibrant history. It is one of the most ethnically and economically diverse neighborhoods in the city. Did you know that several Green Book sites are located there? These were places where Black travelers could safely eat and rest while traveling Route 66 during segregation. I want to give a special thank you to Heidi Hansen and the Discover Flagstaff team for installing Green Book markers at these historic sites. While we've moved beyond the era of segregated accommodations, it's important to remember our past so we don't repeat it. Let me also highlight some of the recent improvements in Southside. The new Cleo Murdoch Park, opened in June. The city has installed flower baskets along San Francisco and Beaver Streets, south of the tracks, adding beauty and vibrancy. Street and curb improvements are currently underway, and the Downtown Connection Center will open in August. The artwork there honors the history and culture of the diverse community that built, lived in, and continues to live in the Southside, many of whom have called the neighborhood "home" for 50 years or more. Southside has been home to elected officials, city staff, both current and former law enforcement officers. Residents take pride in their neighborhood, supporting local businesses and enjoying the rich variety of restaurants, entertainment, venues. Many are especially excited about a new bakery opening in one of the business spaces, a welcome and compatible addition to our community. It's important that new businesses coming into Southside align with the neighborhood's unique character and zoning. The area's commercial residential zoning is meant to support small businesses that are integrated into the fabric of the community, not those that displace it. We need businesses that complement the residential nature of the neighborhood, enhance walkability, and serve the people who live there. Throughout commercial development, thoughtful commercial development contributes to both economic vitality and neighborhood cohesion. Some residents have made great sacrifices to remain in the neighborhood, including relocating houses and undertaking major renovations to create a home for their families. Many live in areas designated as flood plain or floodway and cannot access the equity in their homes. As a result, they often work two or three jobs just to afford necessary repairs, like replacing a roof. Another challenge is on the horizon. When the Rio Deflag Flood Mitigation Project is completed, it will bring long-awaited relief, but also the risk of gentrification. Property values will rise, and so will taxes. This could place significant financial strain on seniors and young families, and I have some ideas about that, but I'll save that for another conversation. Residents of Southside care deeply for their neighborhood and are committed to making it a place people want to live. A dedicated group has been working with city staff on the overlay project for several months. We also maintain a community garden where neighbors come together to weed, water, and care for the space. The regional plan promotes more density in walkable neighborhoods. There are different views on whether that's the right direction, but one thing is clear: We must ensure that Southside and all Flagstaff neighborhoods remain places where people can both live and work. A livable community supports a good quality of life. Thank you for your time and attention, and enjoy your well-deserved break.
Thank you. Casey Gonzalez.
Mayor and council, I didn't know we could ask for more time, and I would respectfully ask for a couple more minutes, just to make sure.
Do you have 10 or more people here with you?
Not with me, like physically, well, it's, um, behalf of the fire department, not, partially. Local 1505, representing the 100 Flagstaff professional paid firefighters. Not all are in the room right now, but it's on behalf of us and then in connection with the fire department, just to say thanks for something. So I just want to make sure I can give the full thanks.
Well, it wouldn't matter whether you were yelling at us or thanking us in terms of the amount of time that you're allowed to have.
So I just want to make sure I get it out, get what we're going to say. Three should be enough, but I just want to make sure I hit the points that we're going to hit, that I'm going to hit.
So, yeah, just for clarity, mayor, council, and I appreciate it, Casey, I just want to make sure, the rules are very clear, that the 10 people have to be here, that they're not speaking, and that they cede their time essentially to that person that is speaking. So unfortunately, it wouldn't work, sorry.
Copy. Without rules, there's chaos. I'll speak fast. So, like I said, on behalf of the local 1505, United Flagstaff Firefighters, representing in Flag specifically, the 100, approximately 100 paid professional folks providing fire service. And what I'm really here today for is to say thank you to a specific individual, and it was coincidence that this happened today with the email that went out this morning. I've used this statement, quote, from Thomas Jefferson before, "A difference of purpose, or a difference of opinion does not equal a difference of purpose." What we exist with, within public safety, advocating for our members, promoting public safety within the community, our folks, you know, what you've seen in, up in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, you don't always know if you're going home at the end of the day when you work in public safety. And so, having those relationships built with individuals that will be willing to sit down at the table with you. We don't work under an organized contract. In Flagstaff, we don't have an MOU. So everything that we accomplish, everything that we try to move forward comes from relationships. And if you don't have quality relationships, then that's where you have the problems, which for many years that have existed within the city, that's not always been the best relationships. And so, when you look at things that come to the right person, the right place, and the right time, within the fire department, we had that happen when City Manager Clifton was hired several years ago. And so, we had this made before, we've just been waiting for the time to give it to him. And what's happened over the last several years within the fire department, the trajectory that we are now on, what he's taken on as an individual, as a city manager, someone who's willing to sit down and listen, we don't necessarily always agree on the path or how we're going to get there, but understanding the endpoint and where we're going and that we can work together to get there. And if it's not something that we're going to agree upon, having enough respect on both sides of the table to understand that and continue to move forward with each other, having the best interest of our members, the community, and the city in mind. And so, we had this put together with what's passed with the most recent budget, which has put us very competitive within the state, finally, after many, many years. You know, it hasn't fixed everything, and there's still a long way to go within public safety and Flagstaff, but we're in a far better place today than we've ever been in my 10 years with the city and then listening to individuals prior. And so I'm just going to read this real quick with my last 30 seconds. "The United Flagstaff Firefighters, IAF Local 1505, would like to recognize and thank City Manager Greg Clifton for your continued support of the Flagstaff Fire Department. Your leadership and commitment have made a meaningful difference in our ability to serve the community. Thank you." So, I just want to recognize you, say thank you for everything you've done for us. Over your back.
Thank you, Casey. Noah Baker.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, council. Thank you so much for having me back up here again. My name is Noah Baker. I work for the Wildland Fire Management Division of the Flagstaff Fire Department, and I want to take a couple minutes to give you a final update on our pine needle drop-off project. So, two things happened since I was here last. We completed our Country Club Continental Area Project area, which was our largest spot. We had eight dumpsters there, I'll go more into that. We also started the final phase of the project, which is in Boulder Point. We have two dumpsters out there right now, and they're getting filled up already, which is always a good sign. Country Club, we learned some lessons from. Generally, people loved that it was out there and that we were able to take pine needles away, but some of the feedback we got was they wished they were out there longer. We had eight dumpsters in there, which is more than we've had anywhere, and they all got filled, and they all got removed, and they all got brought back, just to give you an idea of how much biomass was removed. For Boulder Point, things are going really well. We've only started yesterday, but they're filling up. The community's been pretty receptive to it, and it's always a good sign when they start filling up. That is our last phase of this pilot project, so we are going to kind of assess some of the lessons we learned and come back with solutions and how we could have done better in the past. The one thing I do want to impart on you is a lot of work was done, not only by us, but our residents. We removed, as a result of that work, tons of biomass, and we effectively changed the wildfire risk in areas of our community to an extent. That extent, it's a relatively short-term solution. We're going to have to do something next year. So, we're going to keep learning our lessons, and we're going to come back better with that. I thank you for having me up here, and you guys have a good day.
Thank you. Marnie Babbitt Pierce.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm Marnie Babbitt Pierce, the manager of wellness programs at Northern Arizona Healthcare. Today, I'd like to announce that Northern Arizona Healthcare has been recognized with the Healthy Arizona Work Site Gold Award, presented by the Arizona Department of Health Services. This state award is a reflection of our unwavering commitment to fostering a healthy, supportive, empowering environment for all of our colleagues. Receiving this award demonstrates that NAH not only meets, but exceeds best practices in workplace wellness. It acknowledges the comprehensive policies, innovative programs, and sustainable initiatives that we have put in place to promote the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of Team NAH. Our wellness programs aim to be comprehensive. We focus on physical health, mental health, and financial health. We ask our colleagues to share their knowledge with one another through weekly webinars. In our Wellness Kitchen, our nutrition colleagues share healthy recipes. In Wellness in Motion, colleagues lead yoga sessions or stretches that can be done at one's workstation to reduce fatigue and incorporate movement into your day. This state recognition of our wellness programs sets us apart among Arizona employers. It highlights our role as a leader in employee health and wellness within the healthcare industry and beyond. This achievement would not have been possible without the support and vision of our leadership team, who've made health and wellness a top priority throughout our organization. Their dedication has enabled us to create a workplace culture where well-being is integrated into every aspect of our operations. We also owe a huge thank you to every team member who contributed ideas, participated in wellness initiatives, and inspired others along the way. Together, we have achieved something truly special. We are proud to stand out from our peers to be acknowledged for our efforts to create an exemplary environment for both our staff and the communities that we serve. This award is a testament to our continued commitment to excellence in workplace wellness. Being among the select recipients of this award motivates us to continue raising the bar and exploring new ways to make health and well-being a top priority. I would like to invite the City of Flagstaff and other local employers to join us as recipients of this award by joining us for an informational session on Friday, July 18th, at Flagstaff Medical Center from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. More information and registration can be found on NAH's Facebook page. Thank you.
Thanks, Marnie. Andy Fernandez.
Yes, Andy Fernandez, Mr. Aslan. He says about a scenario of what I've been asking for many, over the last eight years, especially because it's becoming an act of a scenario here. I always come up, I always have my card stipulated, even though I haven't become as frequent as I used to. But I ran for mayor here, I also ran for Congress as the District One, Northern Arizona, back in 2002. And you have people that come in that make comments, but they don't have their addresses listed. And like I say, so we need to address that issue and say, I always come up here and tell them, hey, my address is 2602 North Main Street, so you all know where I'm at. I ain't hiding anything, but other people come in, they don't say anything. So, especially in the last five years, I've made a big issue about this. Also, the other scenario that I made an issue of, which our mayor hasn't done nothing about, and this is a very hazardous scenario right over here off of Butler, unfortunately, and a few other areas where you have the crosswalks, where the lights go on, you push the button, and you have to go halfway and push the button again. That's asinine and ridiculous. Why don't you just go to Chandler, right there by the, right off of Boston Avenue? And you'll see it right next to the library. You push a button once, and the light goes on from both sides. Now, I do a lot of biking and a lot of walking, and I do use those crosswalks, but I'm starting to think maybe I'm better off crossing somewhere else, maybe it's called jaywalking, but I'm safe. I've come close to getting hit numerous times. Out of 35 times, we're saying 24 times, 28, 28 times. And there should be officers present in these areas on a frequent basis, because these people that are impatient, and they try to do, the speed to run the light so it doesn't turn red or it turns red while they're moving, that's a messed-up scenario. Another scenario is also looking at addressing some scenarios like they do in the valley and putting gates and the entry rates of the alleys. This will alleviate some of the scenarios with some of the graffiti and other issues. Actually, James from the Flagstaff City Water Department and the Meter Department said, for his route, especially up by Lake Mary, Bonero, there's an area that where they go in, and they found dead bodies. And with the talking brush up to five, six feet, you can't even see them. So, all these issues that have been not addressed because of blatant negligence. Now, the other scenario is the big bill. That's going to facilitate a scenario where big insurance companies and medical agencies have collusion, been manipulating scenarios, profiting on his profits. But now, if you eliminate this scenario with a big bill, now the scenario is going to be for now, because the people who are antiquated to needing medical facilities won't be able to pay those high rates. They need to do is eliminate that and actually put wage scales and drop it down at a reasonable rate, especially like these nurses, portable nurses, they go all over the place, making $180 an hour, that's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Make it a sensible scenario for everybody.
All right, next up, we have proclamations. We have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and something tells me that there are some people in the audience for this. So, if we could get some help moving the little rope there so that you could all join us on the dais, and then council, you can figure out a way to get down there, maybe underneath that railing?
And then keep chucking them to the back, the taller, the better, in the back. If you're a smaller person, you can get on the second line here. It's a lot down here, too. We've got a whole bottom row. Whole bottom row. Whole bottom row.
Director Garcia. So that was pretty smooth. Could we get more people down front? Because there's so many people who won't be shown in the picture. All right, so after I read this, we're going to take a couple of photos, and then I'll invite whoever would like to speak for the group to come down and speak for the group, if you'd like to. So, Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the City of Flagstaff. Parks and recreational opportunities are fundamental to creating, building, and maintaining a healthy, diverse, and enriching community through a variety of programs and activities. The Parks section maintains 700 acres of park grounds, 59 miles of the urban trail system, the Citizen Cemetery services and operations, and snow operations to provide a safe and healthy community. The Recreation section programs outdoor and indoor athletics, programming, and classes at a variety of recreational centers, which provides a livable community. The Open Space section maintains 3,500 acres of protected open spaces, creative passive recreation, wildlife educational opportunities, which provide environmental stewardship. And the Events section manages 1,500 private events on city-owned properties, produces signature events, and markets the division's programming offerings for an inclusive, engaged community. Parks and Recreation begins with the children and youth of Flagstaff, who are provided with a variety of enriching environments, educational opportunities, and physical programs, fostering their love for fun. And Parks and Recreation continues into adulthood, where community connections are established through indoor and outdoor athletics, events in our parks, and classes in our recreation facilities. Parks and Recreation supports our aging adult population with opportunities to maintain and improve physical health, enjoy passive recreation. Now, therefore, I, Becky Daggett, mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Flagstaff Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you, everybody. It doesn't work without this team right here. This team, plus many others, part-time coworkers, make all of that tick, and it's absolutely amazing every day, and it's seven days a week, no matter what the weather is, or no matter what's going on, inside or outside. So, thank you to this team from the bottom of my heart, because it doesn't work without all of you. And I got a few more things, because we're about ready to kick off July Parks and Rec Month. So, we're kicking, we've got cool programming going on at all of four of our recreation centers, so please come check it out. so please come check it out. We've got one of our largest events, Would Touch a Truck, on July 13th, if I'm not mistaken. 12C, this is why I need everybody to help me out. So we have that event going on Saturday, which last year we had over 700 participants, so we expect just about the same, if not more. And let's not forget what's happening on Friday, July 4th, a drone show. So come out and enjoy. It's good to see you again. Yeah, we'd like to have an e-session about these new railings.
I'm afraid I don't have anything that can get you an e-session.
All right, Council Liaison Reports. Let's start with Councilmember Spence.
The Open Space Commission continues to work on the Observatory Mesa Trail System. At their most recent meeting, they discussed the appropriate naming for our open space treasure on Observatory Mesa. So they're continuing to negotiate with the State Lands Department on that trail system.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight from the Housing Commission, a wonderful presentation that we had from Neil Chapman, who's in the back with us today, regarding the Flagstaff Fire Department's Wildland Fire Management Program. It received a lot of really positive feedback from the commissioners and provided a lot of valuable information. They also received an update on the bond-funded home buyer assistance program. The Commission on Diversity Awareness did not meet in June because of their participation of many commission members in the Pride Parade, Pride in the Pines, the Juneteenth Celebration at the Southside Community Association, and the Juneteenth Celebration that took place in Heritage Square. So a lot of wonderful events that they were able to participate in, and thank you to them for taking time off for meeting in order to be able to actively participate in those events. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I attended NACOG last week, and we went over the different programs and how various cuts are affecting them. It was actually a fairly positive report. We are making a comeback on that. I was nominated and appointed to their executive board, so I'm excited to start that position. And I did attend a ribbon cutting with the artist on behalf of BPAC for a new sculpture located at Francis Short Pond. Thank you to Jean Galazan for donating the sculpture. It's beautiful, definitely check it out.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. So the week before last, I was in Chicago with our tourism team, Discover Flagstaff, for a big international U.S. Tourism Conference. It was a great time. Saw our team working very hard, got to see a little bit how the sausage was made in terms of outfitters making connections with hotels and restaurants and attractions here in town. Our team was sitting at two different tables, taking meetings every 15 minutes, eight hours a day, for four days in Chicago, and it was really, really neat to see and be a part of. Because I was there, I missed the water conference, the water workshop that happened. Councilmember Garcia, hoping maybe you can bring us up to speed a little bit on that. I know that you attended as the secondary liaison for the Coconito Plateau Water Advisory Council. Tourism did have a commission meeting this past week, it was pretty standard, just some local check-ins, reports on attractions, things are a little bit steady, a little bit down, and then a longer discussion around the drone show that's coming up this coming week. Not much more to report there. There was a Sustainability Commission meeting as well, which involved a retreat. Lot of nice kumbaya stuff going on there, included dinner and mostly a work plan and prioritization for projects that are on the horizon in the next fiscal year. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilmember Aslan mentioned, a couple of weeks back, I had the pleasure and honor to be at the Rural Groundwater Resilience Workshop. Myself and Councilmember Spence was there to learn more about the state of groundwater here in the Coconito Plateau region, and have a better understanding of what is flowing beneath our feet and what we need to do to protect that moving forward. The day was, I don't want to say typical, but I think it was kind of your understandings of groundwater, how that moves around, how to keep that clean, expanding on the economy and water resiliency moving forward, and a host of local speakers, shout out to the Water Department here at the City of Flagstaff, and various other community members that showed up. And I think the best part of the day for myself personally was the interaction with other folks with like-minded interests and the networking that was able to be done, as well as the learning. Also, the Library Board met last week, where we had Chris Rhodes talking to us about the city anti-bullying policy. And it was, it was an interesting and well-received presentation. Besides that, it was a bit of a short meeting, so besides that, all we talked about was the library of things, and that is the enumeration of stuff that you can check out from the library, which includes a didgeridoo as Councilmember David Spence is on the waiting list for. So if you feel like, you know, if you need a didgeridoo, or a phone charger, headphones, there's all kinds of stuff down there. But also, I wanted to also highlight the cultural passes by mentioning that whether you're a temporary library cardholder or a full-time library cardholder, you can use those cultural passes to one of like 24 different places, including Lowell Observatory Museum of Northern Arizona, Sedona Heritage Museum, Arboretum of Flagstaff, Cave Creek Museum, Desert Botanicals, the list goes on and on. But I also wanted to mention that this probably, probably getting close to the end of when you're going to need the seed library bank, but the East Side Library has a small seed library that you can go and get a myriad of vegetables and flowers to grow in your garden, and then when they produce seeds, there's a system to where you can return them back, so others can use your seeds to grow flowers in the future. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
I don't have anything to report this week, thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of short ones. The Housing Authority met and discussed vouchers, again, the vouchers from Williams, that's still moving forward. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Commission meets only when there's something that we need to talk about, and you'll see an appointment for another member on today's agenda. The Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living has been discussing accessible trails in Flagstaff, and also code enforcement. That's a perennial or a persistent issue that is discussed at the, at the commission, as we see many obstacles laid out on our sidewalks that make it really difficult for people of different mobility challenges to navigate, so it's always a topic of consideration. All right, so moving down to appointments. We have 7A, Consideration and Appointments, Parks and Recreation Commission, and first up to make an appointment is Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. This was an incredible slate of people that applied, and I just want to thank everyone. Very hard to narrow it down, I did talk to a few of the applicants, couple of them I couldn't get ahold of, and I did talk to some on the commission. And I'm very happy that we, that I move, that we reappoint Stephen Parsons to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'm wondering is, does everybody out there know something we don't about Ed? He's got half the building to himself over there. I hope you don't feel too lonely over there. I was, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Parsons got reappointed, so I'm glad that happened. I would like to additionally appoint Camille Diab as a new applicant for the role.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I did owe the remarks from Vice Mayor, this was an amazing group of applicants, so I hope, I think their applications stay in queue, correct? I'd like to nominate Lisa Lamberson as a commissioner.
Would you like to second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. All right, so moving down to B, which is the Transportation Commission. I am first up, and I would just like to thank everyone who applied. It's, it's so wonderful to receive so many applications that you get a sense of the community's interest in a commission, so I love to see this. I would like to reappoint Brandon Krukschenk.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. This also was great to see so many applications and so much interest, and I love reading the reasons why, and just really, really see the heartbeat of our community, so it was great. I would like to nominate Joseph Koenig as a commissioner.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Matt Mitchell to the Transportation Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving down to C, the Mountain Line Board. First up, we have Councilmember House making an appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike the other two commissions, we did not have a wide suite of people to choose from. However, I feel very confident in moving to reappoint Michelle James as a current commissioner to the Mountain Line Board.
I'll second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Brandon Tashel to be an alternate on the Mountain Line Board.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. So now we're moving down to the Consent Agenda, and all items on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine, unless a member of the City Council expresses a desire at the meeting to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion, it will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda, and unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by Council are budgeted items. So Council, are there any items that you would like to pull for further consideration? All right, then I will entertain a motion on 8, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, H, I, J.
So moved.
Any discussion?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, yes, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving down to 9A, Routine Items, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-32 and Ordnance Number 2025-12. Hello?
Hello, I'm here if you have any questions.
Council, do you have any questions that came up in the intervening time between our, our last discussion of this?
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-32.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
Mayor, that will be for the ordinance.
Oh, sorry about that. Can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled PZ-25-00088-Forest Resource Pilot Program, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
All right. Thank you. Wait a minute, adopt, read.
Yeah, that was technically a motion to read, now we need a motion to adopt.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2025-12.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Down to B, Consideration, thank you Tiffany, Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2025-13. Hello? Council, do you have any questions for staff?
No, but I'll make a motion.
All right, can we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we read Ordinance Number 2025-13 by title only for the final time.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100, a valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, down to C, Consideration and, thank you very much, staff. Consideration and Approval of Contract. This is a change order with peak engineering. Hello and welcome.
I don't get to just stand here and have you approve, so. That's right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. David Peterson, Capital Improvement Project Manager. Tonight, I'm here for Change Order 7 for John Wesley Powell. We've been before you a lot the last couple of years, and excited that we get to be before you tonight with some design work I ask for you. John Wesley Powell's on the southeastern section of the city. Many of you have attended walkthroughs of the alignment over the years as well. We'll be connecting the east end of John Wesley Powell, where it terminates to Forest Street. And on the next map, the red section here is what we're talking about tonight. So we're doing the design of the red line from the Little America Canyon Del Rio border all the way down to Gibson to the STL 405 portions. This red portion in the middle, it's about 4,300 linear feet, so a little under a mile. That's That's the part that we're talking about for the design, and then ultimately the construction that will be back before you again when we get to the construction part. So tonight's just the design work. To introduce the team, we have Julie here from Peak Engineering. The contract is with Peak Engineering, but like many of the other designs we do here at the city, there's a lot of subconsultants that go into that as well. So with this project, we'll have seven subconsultants for everything from geotechnical to looking at the floodplain impacts, the architectural, the landscape architect. So I just wanted to paint the picture that it's actually eight groups that are coming together to come up with our design, the engineering design for this project, not just one firm. Whenever I do change orders, I always love to give a history of how we got to where we got to. So tonight is seven, which therefore means that we were here six other times for other things. So briefly, back in 2018, we were looking at back then at alternative alignments. They were found to be fatal flaws back then for different alignments that were in different areas. Again, that was seven years ago, very different than where we were talking about today. But that was time and money for that extension back then. Change Order 2, no cost increases, but we added time to allow for further discussions on scoping. And then in 2020 as well, we did more extensive for public involvement, add for time and money for looking at that and engaging with the residents along South Forest Street when we had that old alignment that was further to the east. Back in 2021, we also had the conceptual design work for the roadway utilities and resource protection, again adding time and money. And then in 23, we added funds to work on that specific plan, time and money add as well. And then in 24, just last year, we added time because the specific plan focus kind of changed when we changed the alignment further to the west, to that red line that we saw previously, and then on the last slide of the presentation as well. So we always wanted to make sure we're fitting and looking at the appropriate alignment with the right assessment with our planning team as well. Which now gets us to Change Order 7. Change Order 7, we have five tasks we're looking at. The project management aspect of that is attending meetings, it's managing contracts, paying the subconsultants. Typically, when we design a project in capital, a lot of our consultants do a 30% design, a 60% design, and then final ones, final twos. Since we've been doing some of the design work, we are currently at about 30%. So the first task is getting us from 30 to 60%. And then a key part here is Task 5 is Construction Phase Services. This is a really important aspect we like to include on larger projects. We did it in Buella University as well. It retains that engineer of record to be on contract during construction. So when things come up in the field, we can have that engineer come up with exhibits, attend meetings. They can do the work without having to go procure another contract to have that available during construction. So this is a really key integral part of doing construction on larger projects that really speeds up the project and construction time as well. So appreciate being able to include that Construction Phase Services as well. The time requested, that actually comes up to three years if you do the math on that, but a little under 1,100 days and a little over $1 million. And with that, I told you, be brief. If you have questions or comments, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of my favorite topics is JW Powell. You can ask the city manager, that's the first thing on, question on my list when we meet. You kind of answered it on the last slide, that when I saw the request for 100 and, or 1,000 plus more days, just, I was thinking it was just in design. I was like, well, how are we going to get this thing done in two years, like? City manager promised.
Three years.
So I just wanted to, when I said I had a question, it was before you got to this slide. So this change order will help us finish the design phase and get us into the construction phase.
Councilmember Matthews, that's correct on the design aspect of that. So again, this doesn't cover construction. This is Construction Phase Services of the engineer to be participating in the construction. So time-wise, yes, they overlap perfectly, and the termination will be about the same. But we'll be back before Council to award contract with the actual construction contractor that will work with the engineering firm, Peak Engineering.
1,096 days is not... That doesn't expire, and then we start construction. They're going to overlap.
That's correct.
Thank you.
They should end at the same time, approximately.
Any additional questions? All right, we have three parts of this motion. If I could get someone to make that motion?
Mayor, I will move to approve Change Order Number 7 with Peak Engineering in the amount of $1,044,595. Add 1,096 calendar days to the design services contract and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, so down to D, Consideration and Approval of Contract.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jackson Salazar. I'm a project manager with Water Services. And today I'll be presenting on the Wildcat Interceptor Upsizing Project, Phase 1, GMP 1. So in this presentation, I'll give a brief project background. I'll describe what sewer collection system capacity is, give a project description of what the project does, and go through the costs and schedule for this GMP and the project. So a little project background describing the need for the project. This project meets the top two priorities identified in the last sewer master plan, which were to replace aging infrastructure and to replace this section of sewer that goes from the Wildcat plant up to the south side of I-40, which is what this project is. But that, that master plan also describes that, that goal as going all the way to Fox Glen Park. So there will be other projects and have been other projects to rehab that section of sewer as well. And the other big thing that this project does is it provides additional sewer collection system capacity in the area of the project. So a little on what sewer's collection system capacity is. Basically, it's the amount of flow that can travel through a sewer pipe. It's kind of based on the size and the slope of the pipe and the upstream and downstream segments of pipe. So state code and ADQ require capacity tracking for all of our sewer pipes and sewer systems. And sewer modeling has shown that this section of pipe is undersized with, for new development that's coming to the city. So upsizing is necessary to prevent sanitary sewer overflows. The picture up here on the screen is the form that we fill out for every new sewer extension that we submit ADQ. It requires kind of a design flow from the project, and then we do some modeling to calculate the available capacity in the sewer system where that pipe will connect to. So project description, like what does this project exactly do? It installs a new 42-inch and a 48-inch sewer main. It crosses the BNSF and ADOT right-ofways, the train tracks in I-40. And it'll prepare the BNSF crossing for a third rail when that comes. And then it requires a big sewer bypassing pump system as it, this is the end of the line right before it gets to the Wildcat Treatment Plant, which is our end-of-the-line treatment plant. So it'll, all of the city sewer flow goes through that line. And then I have a map on the next slide that shows exactly where this project is. As you can see, we start on the south side of I-40 there. We will be installing that 42-inch, which will parallel the existing 33-inch sewer up to, and just past Route 66. And then we will bring those two sewers together into a larger 48-inch sewer, which will go all the way up to the Wildcat Treatment Plant. And so, cost and schedule for the project. So the cost for this first GMP is $5,374,000 and some change. And this is going to be to purchase long lead-time materials such as pipe and manholes, and the setup of a construction material storage yard. This project is expected to go to construction this fall, and this GMP 1 is going to help out a lot with that. And then hopefully be completed by the end of 2026. We have some additional, at least one additional GMP is anticipated to cover the remaining balance of the scope of this project and any additional costs that we identify between the 90% and 100% plans. A ballpark estimate for the total cost of the project is around $15 million. Any questions for me, guys?
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I correct in understanding that you're going to be somehow going under I-40 and under BNSF tracks? And if so, how do you do that?
That's correct. So on I-40, we actually are paralleling the existing pipe, which goes through a box culvert, so that's pretty interesting. And then at BNSF, we are boring under the train tracks. So we'll be installing like a steel casing, and then the pipe goes, slides through that casing. So in addition to the sewer, we're also realigning the reclaimed water line that goes under BNSF. So that's also covered in the scope of this project. Is it boring for that as well?
And are you taking into consideration the proposed routing of the Red Gap Water Pipeline? Can these crossings be used for that eventual possibility of that water pipeline?
No, this project does not include any boring or anything for that future pipeline at Red Gap Ranch. That'll be a separate project.
So, help me understand. Wouldn't it be better to upsize your boring capacity to accommodate the future Red Gap Pipeline if it has to cross these, this highway and this railroad? It seems like the planning should be done now for that possibility.
Hey, thank you for the question, Councilmember Spence. The Red Gap Pipeline will diverge from the I-40 corridor out towards Cozino, so it won't interact with this pipeline in that area. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Jackson, for the presentation. I read it, and you know, I've been on board. I fully understand it. But since we're getting to a decision point here, could you just really briefly take us through how this is going to help out what currently exists for us?
Yeah, so basically, based on our sewer model, the current pipe, when you input the flows from new developments, is undersized to handle those. So the state code identifies certain metrics that you have to meet. Like, once a pipe is 75% full, then you have to upsize it. So what this will do is prepare us for the next 50-plus years of development and starts at the Wildcat Plant where we're upsizing the main trunk line that goes into the plant. So it should be good for quite a while after this.
That's what I like to hear, proactive work from the city. Thanks a lot, Jackson.
All right, I don't see any additional questions, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to approve the SEMAR Construction Phase Services Agreement with Eagle Mountain Construction in a total amount of $5,374,180 for Phase 1, GMP 1, to initiate construction of the Wildcat. I should have thought about this before I took this one. To initiate construction of the Wildcat Interceptor Sewer Upsizing Project and approve an owner's contingency of $131,077.58 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving down to regular agenda, 10A, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution 2025-38. Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, colleagues, and community. I'm Charles Hernandez, Deputy Chief of Criminal Investigations at the Flagstaff Police Department. Before you is an item, agreement between Coquigny County and the City of Flagstaff for local border support grant funds. I know from our perspective, city leadership, and your all's perspective, local border support can mean a lot of things. I want to assure you that these funds are designated to the Metro Narcotics Unit, whose primary focus is drug smuggling and interdiction of drugs within the community. And that's the only support that we use these funds for. So this grant came through us by way of county, through Arizona Department of Public Safety. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that these funds are for operation and personnel expenses solely at the expense of Metro Narcotics Unit. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you for that. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Charles, for putting this in front of us and also explaining to that level. I'm kind of just going to go a little bit deeper on this one. I talked to some, a few of my constituents this weekend, which were, you know, pretty hypercharged about immigration issues and things around that. So I just wanted to, to help them understand that sometimes, and I could be wrong about this, I want you to help me understand as well. When you're dealing with criminality, sometimes you do deal with criminals that are not from this country, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's where ICE does work with, or it could work with the Flagstaff Police Department as far as the apprehension of those criminals, and then the reporting on those type of criminals.
In my experience, we haven't had any direct relationship in enforcement actions or activities with the Immigration Customs Enforcement Agency. That would be an after effect of after someone who has had interaction with us for criminality in the community after the arrest through the justice system. So we don't have any interaction with any enforcement or removal orders. And that's specific to this grant as well.
And am I wrong by thinking that this grant helps us make those connections when we are dealing with folks that are not from this country?
I would say that's mischaracterization. I think this grant helps us address the drug sales, the drug use, and specific trafficking of drugs in the community that impact not only the criminal behavior and the safety of the community, but health as well in the community.
Thank you for that, and next time I'll rephrase my questions a little bit better. But I wanted to make sure that we were clear, so I threw some in there that you could clarify for me.
Yeah, thank you for your question.
Any additional questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to motion to read Resolution Number 2025-38 by title only.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff for local border support grant funds.
Thank you. And a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, moving down to B, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-39. Is someone joining us online?
Yeah, we should have Megan joining us. There she is.
Hi, I'm here. Hello, hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I apologize for not being there in person with you all this evening. I'm Megan Dale, the Grants and Contracts Manager, and I'm here tonight to provide information on the... on the Title VI Implementation Plan. I don't have a PowerPoint or any formal presentation for you this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. The Civil Rights Plan is required by the Department of Transportation to receive federal funding assistance. Approving this plan will put us in compliance for grants like the Safe Streets for All Program, which is funding the Butler Complete Street Conversion Project, as well as pass-through funding from Metro Plan. Our section collaborated with Legal, HR, and the City Manager's Office to put this plan together, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I know Rick is there in person to assist as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Council, do you have any questions? Comments? All right, then I will entertain a motion to read the resolution.
I move that we read Resolution Number 2025-39 by title only.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the City of Flagstaff Title VI Implementation Plan relating to U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, and Federal Transit Administration Funds.
And a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-39.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Oops. All right, moving down to C, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-40.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Amy Hagan, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. I do not have a presentation on this IGA agreement with FUSD, with our school district, but I can tell you this has been an agreement in the making. I know I have been working on it with our Fearless Division Director, Rebecca Sayers, for at least the last eight years with FUSD, so incredibly excited to be able to bring this forward today. The agreement does have a one-five-year term, with then immediately in succession another five-year term available, so this agreement puts us forward and sets us in place with our partners with FUSD for 10 years. Very exciting, and happy to answer any questions about the IGA.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember House?
No questions, but just a comment to thank you and Rebecca for this long work. I know that you've been working on this for a long time, and it's very impressive to see us at this point, and very grateful for your continued work to get us here, so thank you for that, and I would like to make a motion if I can. So I move to read Resolution Number 2025-40 by title only.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Flagstaff Unified School District and the City of Flagstaff for facilities, use, maintenance, and repair.
And Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-40.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving down to D, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-41. This is regarding, it's been a long time since I've said this name out loud, Baj Nauavjo Ita Kuukveni, Grand Canyon National Monument. So, Council, do you have any questions? You got a chance to read the resolution. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that, here we are, we read Resolution Number 2025-41 by title only.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council reaffirming support for the designation of the Baj Nauavjo Ita Kuukveni Grand Canyon National Monument, and expressing opposition to shrinking the boundaries or repeal of the monument.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
My wife happens to be on the steering committee for that national monument, and I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 2025-41.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you so much, Council, I appreciate that. All right, E, Consideration and Approval, Use of the Council Initiative Fund for Fiscal Year 26.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Stacy Salzburg, the Director of Communication and Civic Engagement, I also serve as your City Clerk. We received two requests for consideration of the FY '26 Council Initiative Fund. The first came from Council, from Mayor Daggett, apologies, to support the NAU Marching Band, and the second came from Councilmember Garcia with some support to the Market of Dreams. As we are at July 1st, the first day of our fiscal year '26, there is $25,000 available to Council for use.
Thank you. So, sorry, I'm pulling up the agenda again. All right, so the marching band is first on the agenda, so I would love to talk to you all about what is going on here. So the NAU Marching Band has been invited for the first time ever to march and perform in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York, and I'm trying, I have here, so over 100 bands applied from across the country, and just a handful were selected, and the total cost for the band going, and they're going, they have to be there a couple of days ahead of time for events and for practices, and NAU is trying to raise the money so that the students, there can be scholarships, so students don't have to pay the full freight of getting there. This is a huge achievement for the marching band, it's a huge thing for Flagstaff, their banner is going to say Northern Arizona University Band from Flagstaff, Arizona. There'll be all kinds of, there, oh, it's only 10 bands are performing, so out of 100, they were chosen out of 10. And the parade draws a television audience of over 28 million people, in addition to the thousands of live spectators, and this is the first time NAU has ever done this, and I think with, they were talking about doing the rendition of Route 66 from cars on part of the parade route, so I just think there are all kinds of fun tie-ins between Flagstaff and their entry in the parade. The total cost for 300 band members and the staff is around $600,000, and they've already raised over $200,000. So what I am asking for is $10,000. So why don't you go ahead with Market of Dreams, and then we can discuss.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had this idea, since, for political reasons, the Resiliency Hub grant that was garnered to the Market of Dreams, accounted for $25,000, was pulled by the federal administration. I asked myself, how can we help this company, or not this company, but this nonprofit that has been a proven asset to the community in helping micro entrepreneurship, or micro entrepreneur creators become business owners, and folks that had ideas have an event space for those ideas, and learn, basically take people from an idea and leave them with a business? How can we help this nonprofit that cares about those type of things? My first idea was to go directly to like the Resiliency Hub funding apparatus. I sat down with the folks at the Market of Dreams and their team, and they said, without the entire funding, it's kind of pointless for us to go there. So I asked them, where do you need help, and how could we help you? And they said, we just need to have some finishing touches. So up till now, for those that don't know, we've spent over the last three years creating a new site, and in that site, they basically, it's been built off of sweat equity from the community and a lot of volunteership, including some contractors that were able to give a little of their time and a little of their services. But we've gotten to a critical point now to where they do have to outsource and pay for some of those improvements, and while I asked them what they needed, and they gave me a number, I'm proposing for a lesser number, one that's a little bit more attainable. So they said that they could use $5,000, but I broke up the 25,000 amongst the seven of us, and that leaves us about 3,500 apiece, so I would be comfortable with asking for 3,500 from the council. They said that that'll take them a long way for the outdoor lighting, and just some of the safety features, and some of the things that'll shore up the space, so that way it's really usable. So I'm asking for 3,500, they wanted 5,000, but I'm amenable to a discussion beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's have a discussion about this. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of points I just want to make out, or say here. I don't want us to forget the conversation we had not too long ago about the needs of the food bank, and all of the families that they are providing food for. That gets down to our core, basic needs, right? And so I want to be sensitive to our $25,000. And then I also, even though I wasn't quite sure what Councilmember Garcia's purpose was on the Resiliency Hubs, but I thought it was a good time to share something that I found out, that the city approved the position for the Resiliency Hub to pay for it out of our own, out of sustainability's funds, so that isn't totally gone. We did provide staffing for that for one year. So anyway, I just wanted to make the point about the food bank, I won't, you know, it's, we had a lot of money left over at the end, but we can gobble it all up now or see other opportunities, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Joanne, would you like to address both points?
Yep. Mayor and Council, Joanne Keen, Deputy City Manager, on the request from the Flagstaff Family Food Center, after Council had the initial discussion about providing, I think we provided 5,500 from Council Initiative Funds from last year's funds, we went back as staff, and we were able to identify 30,000 for funds for this fiscal year, starting today, by the way, welcome to the new fiscal year. So we will be letting the Flagstaff Family Food Center know that we'll be providing 30,000, and then working with them next year on their request to go through kind of our regular process for our service partner agreements. On the Resiliency Hub staffing, that request was actually to keep the individual who is in that position on staff, but primarily, there are other things that that individual will be working on, including some of the home hardening projects. So I'm not sure if Nicole is on, but I'm not quite sure how much that staff person will be providing the time to their Resiliency Hubs. So Nicole, are you on? Is she here in person? Okay. Okay, well, we can get back to you on that one.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the suggestion from both of you. I'm amenable to providing some funding for both of these. One concern is that this is day one of the fiscal year, so I do have a little hesitancy around slashing off 15 grand of our 25 on day one out of 365. That's something we can grapple with. My other question is kind of more general. I know we've been doing this for several years very successfully, but I'm wondering if Legal has vetted this contribution to NAU, and in light of the gift clause, and any other potential pitfalls with respect to that.
Mayor and Council, Councilmember Aslan, it has been looked at, if Council does choose to move forward with that before the gift, not gift, that's not a good way to put it, before the donation is actually made, we would do a complete analysis of the gift clause. If there was an issue, we would come back to Council about it.
Council, oh, Councilmember House, then Councilmember Matthews?
I just had a question for you, Mayor, in terms of the total cost and the contribution suggestion, because in looking at this one, I was seeing a different total cost, so I'm wondering if that's been updated or confirmed. The total I was seeing before was 200,000, so...
That's how much they've raised?
No, so on the NAU, so they have a, oops, a NAU Foundation crowdfunding site where they were attempting to raise 200,000, then they had raised about 98,000 so far, and in an article from last year in AZ Family, or on AZ Family, they also noted that they needed help raising 200,000 for the event. So I'm assuming that the different number came from NAU?
Yes. I met with the band director, who is also the band director for the community band, and actually, the total he gave me was 600. They, it depends on how many band members they have, and currently, they have 300. So assuming 300 band members, that's 690,000. And the cost per student, the band has to be in New York from Monday to Friday, so they have to fly all of their students and equipment there and back, rent buses during the day, so they're figuring like $2,300 per student, and so the money they're raising, they're trying to lower that amount, or pay even more for students who the cost of it would mean that they wouldn't be able to go.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Garcia, for your request, so I think my only hesitation there is I see the benefits of supporting the Market of Dreams overall. I pause, I guess, on the suggestion of supporting the market under the auspices of the Resiliency Hub project that was lost, only because we have two others. And so in my mind, if we're looking at being equitable with those funds, it would mean potentially looking at similar funding requests from the other two organizations. So I'm wondering if you are overall considering this request as a contribution to that, or if you would consider instead just saying that this is a contribution to the Market of Dreams specifically as the small business incubator and that focus? So can we decouple it from the Resiliency Hub conversation?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember House. Yeah, I was, I added that in there for context, and I lost the page that I had it all written perfectly on, so I was kind of just going off the top. I just wanted to add it to the context of the conversation, so I went there with that intent, but in the end, the conversation that I had with the team there, in my opinion, kind of decoupled my ask and separated it from the Resiliency Hub into something that was more of a community need specific for that nonprofit. Thank you for that clarification, though.
Yes, absolutely. So with that in mind, I do support the full ask for the band, and I would support the request for the market. I'm open and wanting to hear other councilmembers' conversation on this, because I had similar thoughts to Councilmember Aslan.
thoughts to Councilmember Aslan in terms of the overall amount that we have available. But just knowing what this opportunity is for our community and valued members of our community when it comes to the band, I very much support that. And just knowing the value of the market and how much that provides for economic opportunity within our community as well, I support that one as well.
Councilmember Sweet, I mean Vice Mayor Sweet.
That's right, thank you. I too am in support. Councilmember Garcia, thank you for bringing Market of Dreams up. I'm also not necessarily wanting to tie it to the resiliency hub, but I can tell you from working with the market for what I feel is a long time, with their old location and the new location, it is a wonderful asset to our community. They certainly have worked hard from the bottom up to get this thing going, and there are some projects that need to happen to really make the space a benefit for the community. So I'm definitely in support, and thank you for bringing that up. With the band, I'm supportive. I'm a little hesitant. I wish it wasn't 10,000, I'll be honest, because it's day one of our ask. But I see the benefit and what this could do for the NAU marching band. I think it's an incredible honor that they are in the parade. So I'd love to hear other councilmembers, but as of right now, I'm definitely in support of both.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the Market of Dreams is a great small business incubator. I've been in there several times, and it's just a great space for someone who doesn't have enough product or maybe enough revenue yet to rent a space. And they just rent a little corner and stuff. And I think that really goes to our goals and stuff and really helping out those entrepreneurs. So I'm in favor of the 3,500 ask. And NAU marching band, after I spoke the first time, I remembered we did kind of take a big leap when we did the Earth, when we bought the Earth. We bought Earth for $10,000, everyone. And it's really small when you go there. It was kind of disappointing. But this is again, one of those once-in-a-lifetime things. I don't know, my motivation is not so much for NAU but for those band members. And I'm sure that many of them don't have the financial means to do a once-in-a-lifetime experience. I'd like to ask if we support the 10,000, if they could print our names also on the banner? No? Anyway, just thought I'd ask. But I think that because this is such a unique and rare opportunity, I'll support the 10,000 ask on that, too.
Thank you so much. And I will say, I've spoken to Discover Flagstaff about ways, for instance, the band needs to practice marching for two miles. Is it two miles? I think it's two miles, playing their instruments. So we've talked about starting the parade downtown and ending at NAU, or the opposite. I mean, there's just, there are lots of opportunities for our community to celebrate these young people going to play in this internationally known, even though it's Thanksgiving and, you know, not everyone's into Thanksgiving. It's still, I mean, around the country. Anyway, it will be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for those students. And I think a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Flagstaff to host a band that plays in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I too support both of these requests, so I'd like to go forward.
All right. So is everyone comfortable with 10,000 for the band? All right. And is everyone comfortable with 3,500 for Market of Dreams? All right, great. So we're good, correct?
Could we get a motion on both of those?
Yes. Can we get a motion, please?
Mayor, I will move to approve the consideration of the, or the use of the council initiative fund to support the NAU marching band in the amount of $10,000, and the use of the council initiative fund to support the Market of Dreams in an amount of $3,500.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. All right, moving down to discussion items. We have our FY '24 Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Report, Projects Report.
Good evening, oh, afternoon, Mayor and council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I am going to hand this presentation off to Tia Hatton Henny and Kenzie Moreno, but I wanted to take a moment to celebrate Tia. She is going to be leaving her position with the city to start her graduate degree at NAU. So I just wanted to give her a shout out. She has, in her time with us at the city, really transformed this initiative, the Neighborhood Sustainability Grants, which we'll be hearing about. And we are forever indebted to her for all the great work with, working with the Sustainability Division, but specifically working with the Sustainability Commission to really elevate the quality, the accountability, and the transparency of this grant program. And I'm really excited for you to hear about all the great work. And with that, I'm going to hand it off and just say thank you, Tia, for everything.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Tia, before you begin, Councilmember House has a question.
So I know this is a discussion-only item, but would it be possible for us to make a motion that Tia is not allowed to leave?
(laughter) It's funny. Appreciate that. All right. Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Tia Hatton Henny, and I'm a Sustainability Specialist.
And my name is Kenzie Moreno, and I'm the Outreach and Communications Vista.
We are very excited to be here to present an overview of the fiscal year 2024 Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Projects and their accomplishments. The Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program funds creative, community-led sustainability projects. Over the last decade, this grant has funded over 80 projects across Flagstaff and has an estimated impact on well over 1,000 community members. This grant program is funded through the environmental management fee, and in fiscal year 2024, the Sustainability Division and Commission allocated 75,000 to the 13 top-scoring projects. These recipients received funding in early 2024 and had 12 months to carry out their projects. The Sustainability Commission devotes several meetings to evaluating and scoring applications. This is a competitive grant process, and in fiscal year '24, we received a record 31 applications. Now we will highlight each of the 13 projects by category and celebrate their project outcomes. We'll start with the food projects. All right, the first project I'll talk about is Alexi Chemiotech's Bushmaster Park Community Fruit Orchard. They received a $7,500 sustainability grant, as well as a beautification and action grant to fund the project, which had the goals of attracting and supporting pollinators, providing shade and a gathering space, engaging volunteers, and eventually providing public food access. For this project, 20 to 30 volunteers gathered on Arbor Day last year to plant 29 trees of a wide variety, including apricots, plums, peaches, and many more, and to install protective fencing around the trees. Local business Morning Dew assisted with installing the efficient drip irrigation to water the trees. This project wouldn't have been possible without the efforts of not only Alexi, but also PROS, Beautification Arts and Sciences, and community volunteers. This special project will benefit the community for years to come. The next project is the Olivia White Garden Expansion by Northland Hospice and Palliative Care. They received $5,000 to expand their sustainable food and pollinator gardens and add other attractive features. They wanted to provide more productive sources of food while expanding and improving the atmosphere for hospice patients. This project relied on extensive volunteer hours, including many master gardeners. An amazing 1,670 volunteer hours were spent on this project. These volunteers upgraded paths, fencing, garden beds, and added educational signs. They were also able to start utilizing a rain barrel to collect water and install a new efficient irrigation system. Since these garden improvements, the hospice has seen double the number of patients, families, and visitors to the gardens. The garden was also featured in the 2024 Master Gardener Tour, and the Northland Hospice is hoping to continue to expand and become more accessible to the community via the adjacent footpath in the coming years. Next is Indigenous Bible Colleges Community Garden Expansion Project, which received just over $2,100. With these funds, the IBC aimed to increase students' knowledge on how to grow, harvest, and prepare their own healthy food. They also sought to reduce food waste and begin composting their kitchen scraps. They hope to eventually integrate this project into their Fifth Wind Entrepreneurial Program. These students were able to grow foods such as squash, blue corn, snap peas, potatoes, and strawberries, and more. Students also started participating in NACA and Sustainability Office garden events, and the group came together for a Harvest Festival in October. This project also successfully led to a reduction in waste through the purchase and use of compost tumblers. They also diverted over a dozen 50-gallon bags of leaves from the landfill, which they collected during one of their service days and used them for compost and cover in the winter. In the coming years, they hope to develop additional partnerships for educational garden workshops and will continue with the IBC gardening group they started. The next project I'll talk about is Lily of the Fields Eastside Gardeners Market, which received $2,400. This project's goals included increasing the east Flagstaff community's access to locally grown food and native plants, providing sustainable living education, and reducing the costs for local businesses and vendors selling at the market. At these Saturday markets, nine sustainable living workshops were provided free to community members, and presenters were compensated. Further, this grant project enabled nine local growers to sell their products for free at these markets, helping to reduce their costs and increase the sustainability of their businesses. They estimated over 500 community members attended these markets, and the gardeners' market also developed a new partnership with the Flagstaff Mountain Town Market, and they joined forces to make an even bigger impact, offer more vendors, and increase their reach. The next project is the Flagstaff Community Markets Farm-to-Food Center Project, which received $6,700. This project's goal was to support local and regional producers by purchasing leftover produce at the end of market days to provide to the food center, thus increasing access to locally grown nutritious food and reducing food waste. This project accomplished its goals by supporting 10 different local and regional growers by purchasing their remaining produce across 14 weeks of the market season. This food was delivered to the Flagstaff Family Food Center to use however they saw fit. While we don't have exact numbers, we can confidently say hundreds of community members benefited from the meals and/or boxes this food supported. The final food-related project I'll talk about today is Flagstaff Junior Academy's Forest Garden Foray. As you may know, FJA has been building a new campus on Gemini near Basis School. While unexpected construction delays push this project back, they hope to work with students upon their return to school and complete the initial part of the project in October. Their goal is to develop a new educational space to teach students how to plant, grow, and maintain Flagstaff-adapted plants. This project also supports their school's climate action goals. They also hope to develop relationships through this project with their new neighbors, including the nearby senior center. The next project I'll discuss is Thaddeus Cates and the Factory, a local nonprofit's project called Peaceful Valley Permaculture. This project, in the climate action category, was awarded $7,500, and while most of the funds have been expended, Thaddeus requested an extension to give the project another year of growth, literally. This project aims to educate Flagstaff about permaculture, to help people reconnect with nature and develop an appreciation for it by planting native perennial species in the natural watershed. All right, I will now pass it off to Kenzie to discuss the rest of the projects, starting with those focused on waste prevention.
The Healthy Soils and Thriving Gardens Project by Restoration Soils, aimed to enhance local soils and reduce waste through close collaboration with local schools and gardens. They received $6,000 to carry out this project with the goal of supporting the creative transformation of waste problems into useful materials. Restoration Soils delivered high-quality compost made from food scraps gathered from Caleb Elementary's cafeteria. This allowed food scraps to have a second life as compost, instead of decomposing in a landfill, which would result in methane emissions. Community organizations that benefited from this project include five local schools, Tara Birds, Flagstaff Family Food Center, and the city's three community gardens. Restoration Soils' efforts to close the loop on food scraps will continue to have a positive impact for years to come. Next up is a project led by community assistance teams, aka CATs, of Flagstaff. The organization received $7,500, which centered around creating a workshop where unhoused community neighbors would have space to create things out of materials destined for the landfill. Finding a suitable space and workshop model that fit the goals of this project proved difficult. However, the CATs team is determined to see the benefits of their essential work. They found a space on Blackbird Roost, where they are continuing their operations today. During this grant cycle, CATs collaborated with Flagstaff Family Food Center to build the compost hub structure at the food center, received valuable tool donations from the workspace, and started bike repairs with Lepsi Lucy. The relationships Fat CATs fostered during this grant cycle will continue to benefit Flagstaff's unhoused community members while diverting waste from the landfill. Next, we have the Flagstaff Family Food Center's Kitchen Composting Program, which partnered with many organizations around Flagstaff to reduce and educate Sunnyside about food waste. They received $7,500 to create a compost hub and build these educational programs. Organizations like Restoration Soils, Elevated Gardening, Cocorino Master Gardeners helped the food center reach these important goals. Through this project, Flagstaff Family Food Center led workshops about composting and gardening, handed out compost bins, and diverted thousands of pounds of food scraps from the landfill. The food center will continue to evaluate their compost capacity with the goal of expanding their program. They received many unexpected donations for this project, leading to additional project outcomes. They learned a lot, and we're excited to see where they go next. Next, we have Sharon's Attic and Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. These organizations used their $4,600 in grant funds to equip the community with tools to reduce, reuse, and repurpose. These funds assisted with creating outreach materials and funding workshops. Outreach materials included social media campaigns, educational materials, online and physical brochures, and stickers to foster a culture of sustainability and thriftiness within the Flagstaff community. Additionally, Sharon's Attic hosted four workshops with topics that taught participants how to repair their clothes functionally and fashionably. This project also raised awareness for Sharon Manor, which is a transitional housing program for survivors of domestic violence run by Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. Next up, we have Flagstaff Community Fridges. Their goals are simple: reduce food waste, increase access to food, and engage volunteers with a new form of food access. They received $7,500 to build a fridge and pantry that is readily accessible daily. The downtown and west side neighborhoods benefit most closely from this fridge due to its proximity. This is just the first fridge to be used as an example for future additions. Once this fridge's operation is perfected, the community fridges team will encourage residents to open a fridge in their neighborhood. The project is still in progress, and we're excited to see this model's success in our community so far. The final project we'll cover today is Flagstaff Shelter Services Transportation Project. This grant allowed Shelter Services the ability to purchase a secure bike rack for the Crowns' residents. This, paired with their efforts to provide community members with repaired bikes, allows unhoused individuals a low-cost way to get to work, appointments, and other essential functions. The Crowns' proximity to a mountain line bus stop also encourages further use of non-car To showcase all the amazing community efforts we've talked about today, the Flagstaff Sustainability Office hosted a discovery stroll. NSG recipients, community members, and council members attended. This served multiple purposes. It satisfied the final presentation requirement of the grant, fostered a sense of community... NSG recipients, community members, and council members attended. This served multiple purposes. It satisfied the final presentation requirement of the grant, fostered a sense of community, and allowed different recipients to network together. This was the first time the NSG grant had an event like this, and it was very successful. We hope to make this a recurring event for years to come. In the 2024 to 2025 grant cycle, we have even more projects that have a myriad of community impacts. We have projects testing biochar's capacity to clean reclaimed water, projects providing mobile acupuncture to community members, and efforts to increase carpooling at schools, and much, much more. We are so excited to see where these projects go. Thank you so much for listening and for providing funding each year for this grant program. This year's grant application will open by September 1st. We will continue to offer grant workshops, grant office hours, and do robust outreach. I will be back to present at council when the applications open this year to solicit your help with outreach and expanding the applicant pool. More information about the grant can be found at flagstaff.a-z.gov/NSG, and you can always reach out to me or the Sustainability Office with questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenzie. Thank you, Tia. A great presentation. I always look forward to hearing about the projects that get funded with these grants. So, thank you, thank you. And Tia, I didn't, if Nicole said what program you were going to do, I didn't hear it. What graduate program?
Doing the environmental sciences and policy one.
Nice, nice. Council, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, both of you, for the presentation. This is such a worthwhile endeavor for the city, and just seeing all these different individual projects are just really great to see. My nonprofit, a couple of years ago, was a recipient of a small grant to build a greenhouse, and it really helped the homeless, working, and poor community that I served grow their own fruit and vegetables, so that was really great. So, my question to you is, I gave feedback then, a couple of years ago, about the complexity of the grant application. Since then, has it been streamlined at all? When I filled it out, it was like I was applying for a $100,000 grant.
Yeah, we have definitely heard similar feedback. Each year, the commission and I have been working together. We have a working group that has been working towards simplifying it. We did just finish another round of updates for this upcoming cycle towards that goal as well, and we are also really excited to be using the new Connect Flagstaff platform rather than our previous platform, so hopefully that will even continue to simplify things and make it cleaner, too.
It's good to hear, and once again, these are such great projects throughout our community. It's really great to see all of them and what they're doing. Thank you so much.
Councilmember House, then Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both so much for the presentation. Tia, I know it was said at the beginning of this how much work you've put into this project, and it is truly appreciated because of the amount of impact this has. And, Kenzie, I hope you know that extends to you as well, and the support that you offer this program. I really appreciated the information on the, and now I'm immediately blinking on what it was called, but the opportunity in March for people to see where these projects went. And, thank you, the pathways. I would love more opportunities like that, just for us and the community to see the impact of these types of programs, because I think so often we have these opportunities and programs that go out into the community, and they make these impacts, but unless you know, you don't know, you know? Unless you're seeing the direct impact or have a program that's right next door to you, you might not know even what's happening. I'm fortunate to live right around the corner from CATS, their location on Blackbird Roost. And so, knowing that they're at that location is really helpful to see how they are embedded in the community, and they are truly part of that neighborhood over in La Plaza Vieja. And so, I think it's just very helpful for us as community to see that sort of direct impact. So, very much grateful for this type of program and hoping to see that expanded, even if it's just held at different neighborhood centers around the community. I think that's a great opportunity. So, thank you both so much for all of your work on this.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you all. Thanks to both of you, Nicole, the whole Sustainability Team, and to the Sustainability Commission. Thank you, Councilmember House, for your comments, and in particular, Councilmember Matthews. Very grateful to hear your comments and your question about these grants. I just, what I wanted to add was just the observation being on the, as the liaison for sustainability, how much bandwidth this takes up for our volunteer sustainability leaders. They spend hours and hours in meetings talking about this and figuring things out, how to decomplicate it, sometimes maybe making it more complicated. And they spend hours and hours offline in little ad hoc committees and small groups trying to talk through some of this stuff. And then they spend hours of their own time poring over applications and doing so with a great deal of passion and love. And I just wanted to give a shout out to that. Obviously, this work is great. The community is getting something out of it. People are excited about these grant opportunities, and they're excited to get these grants. Our commission put, I mean, maybe P&amp;Z puts in more work as a commission with the incredibly important stuff that they do. What I see is that the Sustainability Commission members, in particular, the chairs over the years, Amy Wolkowinski is our current chair, but everyone going back finds that this is a lot of work, and I observe very little complaining about it. I just want to give a shout out to those local unsung heroes. And then, of course, coupled with that is all the work that you're tasked with doing, given what the commission comes up with. Just wanted to name all that.
Thanks. Yeah, the Sustainability Commission is incredible, and I did the math during our retreat last week, and they volunteered well over 240 hours in the last fiscal year.
Any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. You guys did a great job. I had a quick question about, so recently, I had the opportunity to go visit the CATS site and see everything that they were doing, and I was very pleased to see the CATS repurposing bike section. They essentially, well, I think this grant helped garner more community support outside of the grant because the amount of inventory they have inside of that building, the space itself, it looks like a professional bike shop, and the people that are in there care about bikes so much, much like former Councilmember Adam Stromoni, to where they're, you know, teaming up the correct parts with the right bikes and then getting them to the right organizations. My question is, I didn't know about the Flagstaff Shelter Services bicycle program. Are you guys able to connect like-minded ideas in your sustainability grant programs? So that way, there can be a synergy between the two of them, and then I have a comment after that.
Yes, I will say that the Discovery Stroll was, you know, part of the goal there was to connect to those groups because while some people were presenting, the other group got to attend and hear about the other projects, and I definitely heard feedback that there was a lot of good connections and networking happening between groups and community members. But I have had the same thought in terms of possibilities of that partnership going forward.
Yeah, as we see these alliances building over time and trust building amongst organizations of like-minded causes, finding where each niche could benefit the other one, I think this is a perfect, perfect fit for that, and I'm excited to see what happens in the future. And lastly, I just wanted to speak briefly on a personal level to the Olivia White Garden. I experienced that with my father passing peacefully in his last cycle of life there at Olivia White. And that garden is, it brings so much solace in times of hurt. A funny thing is, my dad always thought I was stealing from the edibles at the garden. So, he would always be like, "Can you go sneak me some mint?" or "Can you go get me some chives?" Because he loves fresh fruit. So, some of the last things he was able to stomach were those things that we helped build and the Sustainability Department helped build. And lastly, you know, my mother passed way before my father, but he was always a lover at heart. And a week before his passing, without that garden, he wouldn't have been able to pick that rose off the rose bush to hand to another patient that was there. You know, and it was really sentimental and meant a lot. I had no idea the city of Flagstaff was helping out with that, but thank you, guys. Thank you very much, because it was a blessing.
Thanks for sharing.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, moving down 11B, update on Coconino County, Coconino Community College 2025 bond question.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to kick this off. I'm also going to load the presentation, and I've been told if I can't to give Stacy the look. I think I'm doing it. I don't know what that look is, but... Okay. Mayor and Council, I'll just quickly kick this off. We have Dr. Heizer here today to present on the CCC bond that will be on the ballot in November. Just to give a little background, we've been having some meetings with CCC, some internal staff, and the mayor has been a part of those discussions. In some of the more recent discussions, we've been talking about the Fourth Street Campus and the location where our library is currently located. And we had a recent discussion where we talked about some things that we may want to put into an IGA with a CCC moving forward, but felt like we needed to come to council first to give a presentation on the bond. So, I'm happy to introduce Dr. Heizer. We also have some staff here after the discussion as well, if there are any specific questions. So, Dr. Heizer.
Members of the council, Madam Mayor, happy new fiscal year for all those who celebrate. So, I'm going to give you a quick overview, and I'm happy to answer questions for you along the way, but certainly wanted your input as well as we're starting to kind of make the rounds on informing the public of the college's bond, that the bond request will be placed on the November 4th ballot. So, it'll be a single-issue ballot for most of the county, just the colleges on there. There's one, I believe, in the Kachina area Fire District that's got a ballot proposal on there as well, so that area will have two things, but most of the county will just see this one part of the ballot. So, this is a $100 million capital construction bond proposal. This will be the first capital construction bond request for the college in 25 years. So, the last time that Coconino Community College asked voters to approve a capital construction bond was to construct the Lone Tree Campus. That campus turns 25 years old this year. So, it's been quite a while since we've asked the voters for their support for a capital construction project. The projects in this bond will span from Flagstaff to Page and also to Williams. I'll talk a little bit about those as well. Estimated cost, and again, we do caution folks, we're simply giving averages here. It's complicated to, because, folks, that's the first thing I want to know, right? How much is it going to cost me? We can give you averages, and we can also hopefully put some minds at ease in terms of the difference between assessed valuation and market valuation. So, property taxes are figured only on assessed valuation. That comes from the county assessor's office, not on what your house can sell for in the open market. Those are usually quite skewed. But the estimated cost for an average residential property assessed valuation in Flagstaff is about $6 to $7 a month. $2 to $3 a month is about the average that taxpayers and residential property owner taxpayers would pay in Williams and Page. There are no administrative costs included. That was a very deliberate move on the part of the district governing board. What we mean when we say that is this is not funding positions. It is funding capital construction and the associated costs only. So, this is essentially a project that would take care of those, and then what the college is saying is, we, along with our foundation, are going to take care of the needs, the increased staffing needs that are going to come along with the two new buildings that this would build. So, I just kind of alluded to that there. The CCC Foundation is committed to raising $10 million for the additional staff costs. That's obviously no small task. But again, we feel like if we're going to ask the taxpayers to fund some of this, then the college certainly has to have skin in the game, and this is certainly a part of how we would do that. So, what is the scope? First and foremost, we would rebuild the Fourth Street Campus. For those that are familiar with that campus, it is a 60-plus-year-old strip mall. Was never meant to be an institution of higher education, but we've gotten some great use out of it. But the time has come to do some better things with that land. The college became the owner of that property in December of 2024, so we have owned the building since its inception through, in agreement with the foundation, but we had not owned the land until just December of this last year. Obviously, that was something that was very important as we looked at our capital construction needs and our facility's master plan that we just had done last year. We would also construct a new allied health building on the Lone Tree Campus. The areas in Williams that we would focus on, as opposed to a new building in Williams, of which there's some history with the college and Williams, we felt it'd be a better investment and a lot more efficient if we just partnered with the high school and worked with them to build some more high-tech CTE labs where we could deliver dual credit, so college-credit classes at high school for the students in Williams to be able to partake in. We're trying to expand our dual-credit offerings immensely out there. We started this last year with what we call a Friday college program. So, the Williams community is on a Monday-through-Thursday high school schedule, and then on Friday, they were able to take college classes, so they got college credit for the classes. And we just, we started very small with two sections. They both filled up. We added two more sections. They both filled up. And in the fall, I think, will be at least four, if not up to six, sections of courses for them. So, there's definitely interest, and this would give us the ability to expand that interest into some of the career and technical education areas. We have, we've been trying since prior to COVID, so prior to my arrival with the college, to construct student housing, affordable student housing, on our Page Campus. We have many of the students at our Page Campus, which is by far the most diverse of our campuses with well over 70% as of last check of those students being Native American that are traveling hours, multiple hours, just to engage with coursework. Then they get to drive back, and then they get to drive back to campus. So, we had identified and got very far down the road, and then this thing called COVID hit us and totally put the brakes on everything. We feel like we're very close to getting some dirt moving there. What we would do with this bond is essentially use it to help fund the construction of that project, which would in turn then buy down the rates for our students. So, the housing would be at even a lower level than, a much lower level actually, than what the market would bear. Page is very, very similar to Flagstaff in terms of real estate, very little there, and what is there is very, very expensive. So, any way that we can offer our students a much better deal to stay with us and then hopefully engage with us on a full-time basis is a win for us. We are also looking at expanding some programming in Page specifically around RV and marine maintenance. Those are two very popular fields in that area. I'm going to tell you that right now, it's going to be easier said than done in terms of finding faculty to teach in those areas because the folks that can teach are making the money fixing the boats and the RVs. So, but it is, that is a program that we know if our students engaged with that program and graduated, they would easily be able to make livable wages and stay in their communities. So, what the timeframe looks like, and again, this is assuming a passage of the bond. So, November 4, next day, let's say the bond passes, we would literally be ready and would release RFPs at that point. So, for the next month after a successful bond election... So for the next month after a successful bond election, that RFP process would play out. There's going to be a couple of different RFPs likely that would go out. This is all certainly still tentative. But the first would be for final design. So I'm going to show you some renderings today. They are very, very draft. It's just to give folks an idea of what it could look like. Should the bond pass, then we engage with architects that are, the way that I phrase it to staff is, going to tell us where the toilets are. At this point, we don't need to know that much. We need to know what it could look like, what it might look like, what the amenities could include. Your final design architects are the ones that are, those are the plans that you're giving to your builders and saying, build it. So that would happen right after successful passage. The other thing that we are very likely to engage with is what they call CMAR, which is a construction manager at risk for the project. And again, that's still is tentative, but it seems like the direction that our District Governing Board is moving for that process and basically gives us the ability to work with one individual as opposed to 30 during the process. December 25, so a month later, we would open the RFPs and award, start the awarding process, and then January of 2026 would be the start of our design process. That's a nine-to-12-month process as we see it. So that basically tells you all of 2026 is covered in design. So we're crossing Ts, dotting Is, getting everything in order. Construction would not likely start until spring of '27. Would note that when we say construction, that means construction at both sites. So part of hiring a CMAR, whether we hire one or two of them, is that both of these sites could be under construction at the same time. There's a couple of reasons that the board is interested in moving that route, but not the least of which is cost. If we were to build one site and wait and then three years later attempt to build another, there likely wouldn't be enough bond money left over for us to do that. So it will be an inconvenience during that time, and we'll have to find some temporary space for our programming. But at the end, it'll pay off in a big way in that we'll have some brand-new, state-of-the-art facilities for all those programs to work with. And then basically, an 18-to-24-month build process is what we're looking at, assuming that everything goes the way that we would expect it to go. So all in between 28 and 36 months, but the first nine-to-12 months would be the construction, or excuse me, the design phase. So this, really what we're focusing on, the programs that we're focusing on with this bond and these buildings and the need for it, is what we call H3. So you'll hear the governor talk about this and the legislature as well. This idea that especially for community colleges, that there is a focus on the job training that they're doing that is high wage, high skill, and high demand. And if it's not an H3 job, then you really need to kind of evaluate as the community college, what it is that you're doing. That's even more important in a place like Flagstaff and Coconino County writ large because of the cost of living. So if we have programs that students are not able to earn a high wage when they come out of, we need to be able to justify why that is and how we're going to ameliorate what might come out of that. On the other side, high skill, again, is, it can't just be something that someone can go learn on YouTube. We need to be able to provide the skilled training so that when these individuals graduate from CCC, they're ready to go to work. And then the last is obviously high demand. If you're training for areas that are both high skill and high wage, but there's no demand in your area, you're probably sending students away. This is all about trying to keep students in our area, in Coconino County, in Flagstaff, in Page, in Williams, so that they can stay here and so that they can be contributing taxpayers and be likely, in all likelihood, in the area that they want to be in. We know that obviously it takes a big wage to be able to live here, and so that's, those are the programs that we're targeting. We know as well as we've looked at the programs that we would add in addition to the ones that we're growing, that there are a cadre of programs kind of spanning healthcare, construction trades, manufacturing, and public safety that cover that H3, the specificity around H3, high skill, high wage, high demand. So that's where we're heading. These are programs that either currently exist or new programs that we'd be putting in. So what that looks like for Fourth Street, we would continue to anchor that campus with our construction trades. That'd be our HVAC, electrical, and plumbing programs. That program, just as of right now, has no more room to grow. They are out of space. We could serve more students if we had more space, but we don't have that space. This is part of the reason for the bond is there is demand for students to be in these programs. Right now, we don't have the ability to serve that demand. We would also include advanced manufacturing. We'd be doing training with some of our local manufacturers. Purina is a big one with us that we're looking to expand our training and some of our other manufacturers that are in town. We would also likely move our High Country Training Academy, which is the only law enforcement training academy in northern Arizona, to a brand-new, specifically-designed home that is actually designed for them and for law enforcement, to be placed on the Fourth Street Campus. So that would give them 10,000 square feet of customized space as opposed to what they have on our Lone Tree Campus right now, which is kind of just a hodgepodge of what we had available. Our adult basic ed and GED programming would also stay at Fourth Street as an anchor program. We feel like that on the east side, we see more interaction with that programming than we do on the Lone Tree Campus. That is, it's a very convenient spot for students to get to that are looking to complete that first step and then get into college-level coursework with us. So it's worked out very well. They too would be able to expand their offerings for those students. We're also exploring what would be a rather innovative, not first of its kind, but an innovative partnership with Boys and Girls Club of Northern Arizona. So I've seen some partnerships at community colleges across the country. There's one specifically in California that I'm very familiar with, one in, a couple in Tennessee, a couple in Pennsylvania, where colleges have co-located with their Boys and Girls Club. It really is a win-win in that Boys and Girls Club gets access to space that they so desperately need, and the college gets access to students that don't usually see themselves as college students. That is our audience. That's the audience we want to serve. We want to make that campus feel inviting. We want those students to feel like it's home to them and that it's not this intimidating thing that no one in their college has ever, no one in their family's ever done before. So if we can bring those two entities together, I think that's a huge, would be a huge win for our community, and certainly we've been in conversation with Boys and Girls Club to make that a reality. And then, of course, currently, the East Flagstaff Library, as Joanne alluded to, is on our campus right now, and we definitely want to make sure that that stays that way. I think it's a very unique partnership, but one that serves our community extremely well. Some of the conversations that we've had with staff is this idea of a community education hub. And just love the idea of what could hopefully be the start of a renaissance for Fourth Street, where you've got this beautiful space where a community college, the Boys and Girls Club, High Country Training Academy, and the East Flagstaff Library are all in one very easy-to-get-to location, whether it's through public transit or through your own transportation, and they're all in one spot. So that's the highlights there. We would, for those that are wondering, we would be adding parking spots to that. That's definitely a concern for us, but in the current designs, it does allow us to get at least 100 more parking spots. You may or may not be aware, the current project that's going on right now, we actually lost some parking spots with the roundabout that's going in. So this would give us the ability to use that space a little bit better. So show you a couple of renderings here, but again, qualify then that these are super, super draft, right? This is just an idea of what it might look like. This would be, as you look out over the glass there and you see the street, that is Fourth Street. So just to give you kind of an idea of what direction you're looking, this would be on the roundabout as well, so looking in from the roundabout. And then this would be once you moved further in, so you see the rest of the building. So the middle part of the building there would be our construction trades. That's where you see some of that yard that's been erected there, where they could store some of their materials outside. The current footprint that we're looking at is about 75,000 square feet, of which about 20,000 square feet's been set aside for the library. And that's a doubling of their current size. So currently, the library leases 10,000 square feet from us, and they would double in size at the, with this, the footprint that we have here. And again, just because what you're seeing here is how it looks today, when we get into design and we spend those nine-to-12 months in the design process, that's where the rubber really meets the road. This is the conceptual, kind of get you thinking about what could be in January as you spend those nine-to-12 months, that's where things are really going to hit the road. An idea of what some of our labs could look like here, modernizing the labs, making them much more user-friendly. You see the power up above, there's compressed air up above. Our construction programs would triple their size in terms of the lab space that they have, so it'd be a huge boon for them as well. On the allied health side of things, would allow us to expand our nursing program. We've already doubled the size of our nursing program, and Dave Chaney will not leave me alone. The hospital hires currently, right now, well over 80% of our graduating class every single year. The rest of our students, about 85% stay in our community, so they're going to North Country or they're going to other private providers. But NAH is just desperately in need of more nurses. So that's an area that we would be able to expand after already doubling the size. And this is probably the most exciting part, specific to the allied health side, is our addition of new programming. So in our conversations with Northern Arizona Healthcare, the need for them in these three areas specifically, surge tech, rad tech, and respiratory therapy is immense. Essentially, the first two, surge tech and rad tech, are always in demand. These are all high-paying jobs in the 60s, 70s, $80,000 a year. Respiratory therapy can get into the six figures, and that would also likely be CCC's first-ever baccalaureate degree. So that, just to note too, that would not be in competition with NAU. This is not a degree that NAU has on their roadmap or currently offers right now. But all three of these programs would be brand-new for us, and again, specifically meeting a need of our communities to keep folks up here to take care of us when bad things happen. So we'd be able to do 15 to 20 students per year per program, so that's 60 new healthcare students per year that you're putting through. Our EMS, EMT, paramedic, and fire science programs would also join us in the allied health building on Lone Tree, and that is likely to be where that building goes. Again, draft, what it could look like, what it might look like, this kind of gives you some of the flavor for that. I like this one here. This is, a lot of the new allied health buildings with specific emphasis on nursing, surge tech, and rad tech are building a lot of their classrooms to mimic that of a hospital. So you walk in and you would feel very much like you're in a hospital. Frankly, if you've seen some of our mannequins, you think that they may come alive at night, and they probably do when we're not there. So they are very lifelike. We'll just put it to you that way. So the more experience that our students can get in a real-life environment, clinical type of environment, the better off that they're going to be when they get to clinicals. I'm not going to run through all of these FAQs. I just want you to see kind of where, you know, some of the questions that we've gotten, the why. I covered that. Again, this is the first time in 25 years we've asked for it, and the simple answer is we just do not have the space to be able to offer the new programming or expand our current programs. The funding, will it impact tuition and fees? That's a question that's been brought up. Absolutely not. These are two totally different things. One does not impact on the other. Programming, how does it benefit? You know, we want to be the workforce training engine for Coconino County. That's, at least in my view, what a community college should be doing. This would allow us to definitely, to firmly plant our flag in that space. What happens if the bond is not approved? We've gotten that question. Well, certainly, the college is not going away, but our ability to expand the current programs or add any of the new programs that I just talked about wouldn't happen. There's just simply no way for us to do that with the space that we currently have. The election will not be mail-only. We are not allowed to do that as a political subdivision of the state. We don't qualify as a school district where they get to run mail-only. So this will be a polling place and mail location for November 4. So ballots will still get mailed to all residents or all Coconino County residents who are eligible to vote as of October 6, and then they can also vote in person if they choose to do so. And then, yeah, where are the colleges? What are you going to do during construction? Has been a question that's come up, and the answer to that is we would likely have to lease some space. We've had conversations with the hospital about borrowing some space there that may be available, had conversations with NAU about putting some programs there on a temporary basis. But like I said, some short-term pain for a lot of long-term gain. And then this one we just added, this is people, we get the question, well, how did you come up with this $6 to $7 a month? This is the math behind that. So this is from our bond company, Stiefel Public Finance, and just kind of shows you how they arrived at that average of, I think, $6.49. We're just saying $6 to $7 on the average is what it's going to cost on a monthly basis for Flagstaff residents, Flagstaff property owners. And with that, I think I'm a little long, but I apologize. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or anything of the sort. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Great presentation and a very exciting project. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Heiser. Eleven plus 11-ish years ago, I taught at the Fourth Street Economics and Accounting and the main campus, and I did virtual for Page students. It does need a redo, for sure. But we just had a conversation with Rick Tatter and our staff about how quickly to get something on a bond, you know, bond to the voters. And you're talking about taking this this year, November 2025. And Rick was giving us a deadline that we had to have the bond narrative done by July. Here we are, July. And so I was curious, I'm assuming you're having conversations, you'd mentioned it, with the Boys and Girls Club and with the city because of the library, but how does that play into being, being able to have the verbiage that you need for the bond question to get on the ballot and have a vote this year?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman Matthews. So first and foremost, the election has been called, so it is happening. We've been working with our legal counsel and the bond issuer, a potential bond issuer, Stiefel, to basically working backwards on the county's deadlines for this is when you have to have this, this is when you have to have that. The biggest thing on, from the partnership side, is what they call the voter information pamphlet. The bond, the actual language on the ballot is not, it's very... The way, very vanilla, I guess, is what I would say. When you read the bond language, that's essentially, that's the lawyers and the bonding agency working together to say, this is how we've done it in the past, this is what you've asked for, this is what we're putting on there. Where, from our standpoint, where we're asking our partners to engage with us is on the voter information pamphlet, which is what's sent out, I want to say, August, September, and we have to have that language finalized towards the end of this month. That's the language that we want to make sure. That's the, basically, when you're telling the voters, here's why you're going to get a ballot. That's why this is happening. And so the timeframe basically is very, essentially, once the District Governing Board calls for the election, that sets in motion all of the, all the things that have to happen. So when the District Governing Board called for the election in May, that set the wheels in motion for everything that we're working on right now.
Thank you. And then, and I know you made it very clear that the renderings were draft, just conceptual. Currently, the east campus library is part of your building. We haven't had any on council, any discussion on options or, you know, where we're going in that direction, but assuming that we stay part of that campus. You know, we've heard over the years, the increased security issues that we have over there and the need for more security presence. And so I took note in seeing the design, which looked amazingly beautiful, but it made me a little concerned about... but it made me a little concerned about two stories because I know that just on the, just having eyes on the ground, you know, being in the nonprofit sector for many years, I know how important that is, cameras and stuff. So is there, like, I'm I'm assuming that that if the city's talking to you about partnering in this and staying in that partnership, that we're talking about those challenges and it's different. I mean, when when I was teaching over there, we didn't have those, you know, risk or concerns. But I know then just walking around the corner and going to the library, there was a lot. And I just was curious about, like, is is that something that has to be set in stone or?
Yeah, Councilwoman Matthews, I would tell you, the the two stories is all about efficiency and use of space. So we have to be as prudent as we can with the money that we're asking the taxpayers for. And that's where that's where that comes from. The the space can only be designed in a certain way. And if you start separating things or trying to move everything to one level, your ability to add square footage, which is honestly what we're trying to do, goes away drastically. So the two levels I can tell you is darn near set in stone. The way in which they're housed, the location of which I think is still very much up for discussion. But the, there would be no way for us to, I guess it would be very hard for us to sell to the voters that we're being as fiduciarily responsible as we can be with the money that we're asking for by trying to keep things all on one level.
I appreciate that. And I'm I'm assuming, you know, I I trust our staff, whoever you're in discussions with. If every, all things considered, and we move forward with that, those type of challenges will be discussed at budget retreats for part of next year.
Yep.
So, okay, thank you.
Counsel, Councilmember Aslan.
Eric, great to see you. Couple of questions, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but clarify for me, if you can, this is a county wide bond, correct? Okay, it's not just City of Flagstaff.
Yep.
One question I had is, you know, if the bond doesn't pass, which you you had a bullet point about. I wanna ask the the political question, though, if the bond doesn't pass. How how do you pivot from that? Will you go back to voters again, how quickly? I I think this is incredibly crucial and critical to to do it and to get it right. And you're already off the starting block, so the the timeframe has been chosen. Is there, is there any thinking, is there any gaming out other scenarios?
Certainly, I I would say there is no, there's no hiding from the fact that if if the bond doesn't pass, there's, we're not miraculously holding a hundred million dollars in the back of our pockets saying, yeah, well, we'll just build it anyway. Like, the the unfortunate reality would be we'd have to continue using Fourth Street and and its current, the current facility, being well over sixty years old. And again, not made for educational space. And there would be no allied health center on Lone Tree. So our ability to expand into those programs, surge tech, rad tech, respiratory therapy, would be impossible. Does that mean that if it failed, that in a couple of years, the board wouldn't consider or or would consider putting another question on? I I think anything's possible, but, you know, this has been a process. I've been president for two and a half years. We started this process in my first year in terms of facilities master planning. So while, once you call for the election, the timeframe does seem very expedient. It has been something that the board has been thinking about for quite some time. The, like I said, the unfortunate answer, and and we we really don't wanna come across as it being threatening. Like, well, if you don't vote, i- if the if the community doesn't vote for it, the community college, like, that's not what it is. It's just the reality is that if the bond doesn't pass, there is no ability for the college to do what we're what we're attempting to do.
Dr. Heiser, I will just, you know that I'm fully in support of this already. And I see so many opportunities and partnerships. I've met with your staff about, you know, the construction trades and the need for additional trained folks to work with contractors. So I I just think that this can be a fantastic project. And thank you for presenting the final, final design on what it's going to look like tonight to us.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, it's just a draft.
No, but this is really, really exciting and my fingers are crossed that the community will see it as exciting as well. Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make a quick comment just to finish this? I did just want to mention to Mayor and Council that we will be working on an IGA with CCC, likely to bring that back after the the council break to address some of the questions that have been raised today. But we'll bring that back soon. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, we're moving down to C, our care unit annual update.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Seth Gregor, EMS Battalion Chief and self-appointed, well, actually, it wasn't self-appointed, project manager of the care program. Joined by Danielle and Taya, and I'll have them introduce themselves as they come up and speak. So we're just gonna go through the the great things that have been happening this year with the care program. And for our new council members, we'll just kind of give a refresh of of the timeline of of what we've been through. This was a vision of council back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, at a very difficult time in our community. And the intent was to create an alternative response, low acuity, acuity unit to deal with some of the mental health and behavioral health issues in our community, while on the other side, keeping our police and fire units available for some of those other emergencies to to go to. The initial contract went out in October, October of twenty-one. And Taros took the RFP and we have been in partnership with them. The unit actually went in service March twenty-eighth of twenty-two. And at that time, it was staffed with a behavioral health technician and a firefighter EMT from the Flagstaff Fire Department. Again, the community support and the reduction on public safety was created. We worked with the dispatch center to create a whole new call type, which we refer to as an omega call type, where a series of questions are asked of the call taker, of the RP on scene or not on scene with the individual in need of help and appropriately dispatch out the care unit at that time. Another one of the parameters that we wanted to cap- capture was the proactive outreach to get ahead of these types of calls. Just a little overview of the city, I apologize for the blurriness, I'm gonna get it better next year, I promise. But just kind of shows some of the hotspots that the care unit is seeing around the city. The red line down the middle is gonna be your West sixty-six and, sorry, I forty going through. And then, as you see, some of these bigger balloons, as you can call them, are some of the hotspots. The one kind of right in the middle is gonna be the downtown area that we're showing there. And then the other big one out east are the Huntington Corridor and the Safeway out on eighty-nine. Another hotspot out west is gonna be the Woodlands Village corridor area. These are gonna be your, just some high level updates on as far as the numbers that we've seen since the inception, March twenty-one. That actually should be March of twenty-two, I apologize for that, just noticed that. Once again, reiterating, less lights and sirens to go into these type of omega calls. The third party callers, we refer to them as a man down call, where we don't know if that individual is sleeping. We don't know if they're suffering from a medical emergency, if they're having a mental health crisis. Keeping those, all risk units available for those true emergencies. And the big one that I think is pretty powerful is with the work of the care unit, we've been able to divert over nineteen hundred calls going to the emergency room. Where prior to this, the inception of this, the emergency room was the only destination in town. We have alternative places such as the the shelter right now on the east side. We can take them to the guidance center, Hope Cottage is is another place. And I'll let these ladies speak about some of those. That nineteen hundred calls equates to almost ten percent of total fire department calls, where we hit eighteen hundred, eighteen thousand calls this year. On top of that, they did over two thousand outreaches, providing those resources and needs to these individuals that you might see in Wheeler Park, you might see them in the medians. They're doing those proactive to see what kind of resources that are needed. Downstream from that, they're stabilizing the community at that time as well. And some cool problem solving opportunities that we'll slowly reference to today. I'll I'll speak about that when we get to it. We condensed this from last year as far as the years because we were running out of room. But as you can see, some of the, before the inception of the the care unit, Flag PD had twenty, almost twenty-five hundred mental health related calls. Covid, we, the Covid years, we kind of pulled out a little bit because those were throwing our numbers way off. It really spiked during that time and we were trying to get more of a picture and a long term effect of that. Twenty twenty-two, during kind of that height of Covid, they saw quite an increase on on some of those calls. Twenty twenty-four, we're seeing this across all of public safety right now. We're just seeing an increase of calls, whether it's the mental health, whether it's the true emergencies, whether it's people don't know what to do, they're calling nine one one. Another, I'd like to point out the number of arrestees transported FMC. This is taking a lot of time off of our our partners over at PD, where they're having to span those man hours at the hospital, whether it's with a combative patient, whether it's with titled patients, anything like that, that they have in custody and they have to transport to the hospital. Saw a huge reduction this year from our previous years. Flag fire, we're still running those third party man down calls. This year, we hit over sixteen hundred of those. And a lot of those can be related to the after hours of the cares. And if I didn't mention it, the care is in service from oh nine hundred in the morning to seventeen hundred, sorry, five, uh, seven o'clock at night. We're seeing a lot of behavioral rel-, behavioral health related responses, but we are seeing a little bit of a decrease this year from previous years. Some other important data that we got from our friends over at PD were some of these low offense, minor misdemeanor calls that normally there wasn't arrest to it. And that was another intention of the care unit was to reduce those penalties or arrests of these minor offenses. And this was some of the data that was instructed by council to kind of see how we are, if we are having an effect on it through the care unit. Backup in twenty-four, in twenty twenty-four on some of those numbers. But as you can see, prior to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, there was quite a spike. So those years after the inception, we did see a initial decrease, but it's slowly been creeping up on some of those. Yeah, I think so. Reiterating again, we're we're trying to address those low acuity calls through the nine one one system. We're still working through some challenges on those and I'll I'll speak to those. A lot of the concern that came out of this was the safety of our care folks. Without having the bodies of the the big firemen or the big PD guys there and gals, we, we're, there was some concern on safety. Data shows that care is only requested eighteen out of seventeen hundred and eighty times, not a huge amount. So almost ninety-nine percent of the cases have not required law enforcement. The care has the ability to upgrade if it is a true medical emergency or if we're seeing some other issues that needs to be assessed by a higher level of care, whether it's a paramedic. The care upgraded two hundred and forty times out of that seven hundred, seventeen hundred and eighty times. So eighty-six and a half percent have been diverted from the emergency room.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for having us. I'll be going over a few more numbers in the next few slides. So we can look a little bit at dispatches per quarters, per quarter. So recent trends show that overall higher dispatch volume compared to twenty-two, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So we did see an increase in twenty twenty-four. Highest dispatches were in quarter three in twenty twenty-four, so July, August and September. That may be due to some of the transient population coming up from the south up to the north here, since it's cooler up here. We see only small fluctuations in twenty twenty-four with three out of the four quarters at over four hundred calls. So pretty significant call volume. Overall, we see an increase, increasing, rising operational demand in twenty twenty-four, especially in July, August and September. Next, we'll talk a little bit about response times. So all three years show response times under fifteen minutes. In twenty twenty-four, average response times were eleven minutes. And then it peaked at fourteen, sorry, we see a slight increase to thirteen minutes in twenty twenty-three with a peak of fourteen minutes in the second and third quarter, excuse me, third quarter. And then in twenty twenty-four, we see a reduction of that response times, time down to twelve minutes despite, despite an increased dispatch volume in twenty twenty-four, so better than in twenty twenty-three. I wanna reiterate, though, that we are not a light and lights and sirens response. So the care unit is designed to respond safely, quickly and within a, you know, reasonable timeframe, but we're not a light and sirens response. So, yeah, the the team tries to be out the door very quickly and respond to people. We'll talk about response outcomes a little bit. This one's pretty interesting, I think, because we do see the majority of our outcomes left in care of self or after we've provided support so that we're not necessarily taking them somewhere. So that's about thirty percent of our calls. And then we see a high percentage of shelter drop offs, around thirty percent, and a fairly significant increase in twenty twenty-four. This means that we're we're transporting more individuals to the shelter. And this may, this may indicate a need for more resources in the area, such as a detox center or services geared towards the unsheltered population. Cancellations have remained fairly consistent over the years with a slight drop in twenty twenty-four. And the reason we see cancellations is usually because we're unable to locate the person or the person does declines our services, so that's why we would see a cancellation. We do see a slight decrease in medical escalations in twenty twenty-four, which is great, and compared to twenty twenty-three. And overall, it's, the medical escalations are very low. In addition to that, law enforcement involvement remains minimal across all years as well, highlighting the program's focus on non-police intervention. Primary issue on scene, so as you can see, substance use disorder and intoxication dominates the presenting concerns on scene, consistently making up sixty-five to seventy percent of all calls each year and in twenty twenty-four. Around twenty percent of calls each year are due to individuals needing resources or services. And that number has stayed fairly consistent and the same in twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-three. Numbers are minimal for medical, mental health and suicide ideation, underscoring that the care program is largely addressing substance use related calls. So just to summarize a little bit of this data that you saw, we see a consistent pattern of individuals being left in their own care or with support networks and a growing use of shelter drop off. We have low reliance on law enforcement and guardian guardian medical transport, which aligns with the care alternatives response model and purpose. And dispatch dispatch demands have increased notably over the years, especially in twenty twenty-four. And I realized I forgot to introduce myself, I apologize. I'm Taya Sherman, I'm the Regional Director for Taros Health here in Flagstaff.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Danielle Simmons and I am the lead clinical supervisor of the care unit. I will be talking about proactive outreach. With proactive outreach, when we're not on all of our... With proactive outreach, when we're not on all of our, when we're not on all of our many calls, we are doing proactive outreach throughout the city, making connections with our unsheltered population and just community members throughout Flagstaff. Examples Wheeler Park, Library, Safeway, Walmart on the west and east side, Flagstaff Shelter Services and Safeway. Within our outreach, we provide basic needs such as sandwiches, which in twenty twenty-four, we gave out over a thousand sandwiches. In twenty twenty-four, we gave over a thousand bottles of water, bus passes and over a hundred blankets as well. During the wintertime, that's where we'll provide winter coats, hats, gloves, sleeping bags to our unsheltered population. We also provide Narcan for some of our clients who may have a friend who may be using. We also give out community resources to Flagstaff Shelter Services, the Guidance Center as well.
I have a quick question, if you could go back. And it may seem trivial, but I know that they partner with so many organizations. Where are you getting the food and the water?
Flagstaff Food Bank, which is on my next, next slide.
Sorry.
It's okay. Okay.
As I promised before, the, the real-life impact and the real-life stories are, I, I know you've been drawn to those in the past. And unfortunately, Marge wasn't able to make it tonight. Danielle's going to speak very briefly on these. What I'd like to offer you is Marge is going to write up these stories and I can send them to you if that's okay.
The care data doesn't give a, show the real-life impact of all the stuff that we have done for the community. For example, the care unit has connected people, family members with their lost loved ones. The care unit also helped an elderly man get his utility services turned back on when, and we were able to help him get his bill lower when he was being overcharged for six months. We are also able to connect many, many of our members to substance use rehab such as Hickory, CBI and Winslow, the Guidance Center. The care unit is very busy and we love to connect every, connect our members to the resources that we provide. Our community partners are the Flagstaff Shelter Center, the Guidance Center, Flagstaff Family Food Bank, where we do get our food, water, anything we may need. The Salvation Army, S M R, who donates a lot of our winter, summer, a lot of supplies to us. Mountain Lion Bus, they also provide bus pass monthly for us. NACA, they are tremendous help within the community and many more.
So some of the, some of the challenges that we are still encountering, continually evaluating these, looking for opportunities. Ongoing challenges with the data collection right now. I'll speak on the transition of what was, happened a couple of weeks ago at the end. But the data collection between Terros and Fire, it doesn't match up as far as the same platform. And that's just going to come down to funding. So we'll just continue working with that. I think Terros has a great way of, of how they're collecting their data now. We were using a lot on the Fire side and comparing that, but they do a very comprehensive job on, on collecting the data. The current model effectively reduces the call volume for PD and Fire. While, to expand on that, we're still seeing some of these third-party callers, man-down situations getting through our dispatch system, which is committing those Fire and PD units to respond. Currently still working through that and streamlining the process to keep these units available. Dispatch protocol should maintain alignment with care's intended scope. With the wide variety of needs in the city, Terros and myself will continue to evaluate each call that the care unit is dispatched to, to meet the mission of providing these services to the clients that truly need them. As Taya had mentioned, the need for a client-centered detox substance use facility, offering comprehensive wraparound services. We knew this going into this program. A lot of the data and a lot of the models that we looked at around the country show that you needed a detox center in, in the community. Funding issue. I, I, I think we all understand that. We're going to keep relaying that to see where that falls in, to see what year it makes sense, if it does. So that we can get this implemented. Reliance on the care van and services. This is just come to light this last six months or so, where when the care van is not in service, we're having nine-one-one calls come through our dispatch center for people that are requesting care services. Whether it's a blanket, whether it's a sandwich, whether it's water. And our all-risk units or PD just doesn't, they don't carry those. So still working through. Data evaluation to ensure staffing levels appropriately support the care's planning or support the care's mission. This would make sure that our staffing is meeting the needs of the community. Other systems around the nation of low QD responses include a higher medical component, which can include a physician's assistant that can actually prescribe medications, can fix small wounds without having to tax urgent cares or the hospital emergency room. Some data here at the end that I've been speaking about. We've been collecting data for responses to these omega-type calls. This last year, our Fire units and/or PD and/or Guardian responded to five hundred, five hundred and forty-two that were classified as omega. That's just the ones that were classified. Data's still being worked out through that. Off-care hours, we're still seeing nine hundred and twenty for responses for, for alcohol or altered, altered mental status. The numbers are out there. We're continually working, evaluating to see how we can minimize those.
I've got a quick question about those numbers. Those are distinct. They don't overlap. Because omega could also be for an alcohol-related incident, correct?
It could, it could. These, these don't overlap.
Okay.
The way that we pulled the numbers and a lot of that, when I go to five hundred and forty-two response, sorry, I apologize. When I'd say the nine hundred and twenty-five responses, that one is all about how our folks are categorizing it in our records management system. There's so many options of how they could do that. We captured the ones that fit that definition to the best.
I'll talk a little bit about what's next before we wrap up. So we want to continue to collab, to collaborate with our community partners across the city to strengthen relationships, to provide better services. And that continuum of care is really important. So we want to be able to provide that continuum of care by connecting people to services and finding appropriate resources, resources for them that they can utilize. So seeing some of the, some of these numbers emphasizes the fact that we have, we see a large unsheltered population here in Flagstaff that struggles with substance use. To be able to provide that continuum of care for these individuals, we see a need for more wraparound services. And as Seth has said, a detox facility to address the substance use issues. We're also partnering with CES Partnership Ship for program evaluation for the care program. So we have completed or they have completed the tier-one interviews. And that was eighteen informal interviews that were conducted with community, with representatives from community partner organizations and the care team. Conversations focused on general impression of care, what related data the organizations, organizations are collecting and potential success, success measures. Preliminary analysis indicates that community partners consistently have a positive experience with the care unit. So that's awesome. They find them a valued, reliable resource and would like to see it continue or expand. And then Terros is also launching a new program next week, which is the Ambassador Program, which is in conjunction with the City of Flagstaff. So very exciting. We're hoping to get it started next week. And we, this will be an individual who will be on foot in the downtown area. So focusing on some of the hotspots that we saw on the map earlier to support business owners, provide resources and support to people who frequent the downtown area and as well as tourists. The hours will be Wednesday through Saturday, ten AM to eight PM. And we actually hired a candidate for today, so super exciting. It was not easy to hire for. And then Seth mentioned earlier, we are now providing the EMTs for the care unit. So that has shifted over to Terros from the Fire Department. The transition has been very smooth. The Fire Department has continued to support us and collaborate with us. They're providing training and have provided training, so it's been great. And I wanted to take a minute to give a shout out to our staff that came in. Two of our new EMTs and then Tara, who has been with us since the beginning of the program. So Adam, Penelope and Sonia and then Tara up here. Thanks so much. So just to wrap up the presentation, we did want to highlight that care is achieving its intended purpose of providing compassionate, community-based support. It's helping reduce low-acute calls, allowing Flagstaff Fire Department and Flagstaff Police Department to focus on higher priority emergencies. Care is decreasing the, the number of arrests and bookings related to alcohol use by offering supportive alternatives. It's reducing unnecessary transport to, to the emergency department for intoxication or detox needs, detox needs through appropriate care options. Care is also serving as a proactive outreach tool to meet community needs and support vulnerable populations. It's enhancing the availability of all risk emergency units by managing non-emergency behavioral health calls. And then care is connecting and transporting unsheltered individuals to centralized services, improving access to long-term care. So we just wanted to thank city council members, Mayor and Vice Mayor for listening to us today. And then special thanks to the Flagstaff Fire Department and Flagstaff Police Department for continuing to collaborate with us as well as the City of Flagstaff. Yeah, of course.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'd like to also acknowledge Councilmember Sweet's request to come back in six months to present this data again, mix it up a little bit, hopefully excited up a little bit for you to show someone more of the success, success stories. But just to evaluate that transition as we move to this new venture. And for, for other council members that aren't aware, you amended a contract back this last October to get the firefighter EMTs off of the unit and get Terros providing the EMTs and the behavioral health specialists to, to man the unit. And another shout out to our firefighters that were on this unit. I'd like to acknowledge them for the hard work and the dedication that they had to this unit. And also a gratitude to Deputy City Manager Shannon Anderson and Chief Maynard and Chief Mark Wilson to work through this process to ultimately make the unit a, a better, better program. There's the van. And any questions, comments?
Thank you so, so much. Council, questions? Councilmember Garcia, then Councilmember Spence.
Thank you very much. Sorry, thank you very much, Danielle and Taya and Seth. This is a, this is an amazing program. I watched the inception of this happen here on the dais, lots of council input and, and what this could possibly look like, you know, prior to tariffs coming or any of this coming to fruition. And it tracks almost identical to what the vision was in the beginning. So I really want to thank those who harnessed that vision and, and made it into something that was really impactful. When you're decreasing criminality in our, in our community, simply by a, by being there for people, it makes you question what criminality in our community looks like. And, and thank you for those significant decreases in, in what could haunt people for many years by being in the judicial system, by simply caring for them. I like that. My question is, what is the biggest challenges? We, okay, I prefaced that with the, with the mention of a detox center. So, so if you could speak to what are the biggest challenges and how we could kind of combat those as years go on, as funding opens up, as, as the right fit at the right time moves in our direction. Speak to those things honestly that, that we could use help with moving forward. To me, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The City of Flagstaff, we deal with a lot of alcohol use. And within our community, we are very limited, being a rural area. We have the Guidance Center, they are very limited on beds. And the process to get some of our clients in takes a while. So by the time they are even seen or being able to be admitted to the program, they are already relapsing just due to how the nature of substance use is. And that wraparound service we do not have in Flagstaff. Having a detox center, a substance use type of facility would be beneficial because we will have providers that can provide the wraparound service to have that rapport with our community and eventually being able to get them the help and help and also the mental health behind with substance use. So in the future, it will be very, very beneficial to have a detox center, a substance use rehab for adults and even adolescents as well.
I appreciate that commentary. As a fairly new council person, it makes me start, the gears start turning as far as, you know, how does this get funded? Or is that one of the major issues is, is finding, finding the right kind of funding, the right kind of partnerships for this? And I'll be definitely sniffing that out as we move further in the future. Just because, you know, seeing this develop and watching it grow to where it is, I think we're still in a gestation period. We've, we've conquered a lot, we've come a long way, we've helped a lot of people along that way. But I see a future where we're going to be able to help even more folks as long as we start, keep encouraging, you know, not criminalizing mental health and not criminalizing substance abuse and trying to find a better solution for that. I think that'll help keep people out of jails moving forward and hopefully into a more productive mental state for their own benefit and for our community benefit. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I just want to jump in here. My apologies to council, I haven't seen any Cs or Qs. There's nothing. It's like nothing has been going on at all over here. I even told you I was going to get water and I don't think you saw that. So I don't know what's going on here. But that said, I now have a list of people who have put their Cs and Qs. So Councilmember Spence, if you will permit me to jump to Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I did ask for this and I appreciate that you brought it to us. Some comments, I'm really excited that the Ambassador Program is going to be starting downtown. I didn't realize that we had found someone. It sounds like it was today.
I was just notified before this meeting, so that is good news.
It has been a long time coming, so thank you. And I know we worked hard to find, find someone to fill that position. So thank you for all of your work on that. I love seeing the list of community partners. I think it's great that we're creating this, this great partnership within the community for that. The proactive outreach, freeing up our emergency department. You know, I've been honored to be part of this since the beginning and, and I, I do see the benefit and it's extraordinary. Two questions, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about what happens if you come out and the, who you're attempting to help or talk to is refusing service, what does that look like? And then I'm wondering about expanding hours. Have you identified which hours and how, what that would look like in the future?
So if a client decides to refuse service from us, as long as they're alert and oriented and able to care for them, we respect their autonomy and let them walk away. It's a outreach program, it's, they don't have to take our service if they want service. We are more than happy to help them.
And I'll speak on the second part. I knew this question was coming up and I hate to divert it or anything, but those are consistent conversations we're having with Deputy City Manager Shannon Anderson and also with Chief Connolly over at PD, collecting more of that hard data on the after-hours, getting the public assist ride numbers from PD to try to come to better with, come, come together with a better package to be able to provide those. The model could be anything. It could be an east-side, west-side configuration. And sorry, Shannon, I'm just kind of spitballing here, but an east-side, west-side configuration, a twenty-four-hour configuration, a more centralized location, it's all on the table and we are looking at it and discussing them.
Thank you, that helps. I think I've asked that question every, every time we get the presentation.
And you're still waiting for an answer.
All right. Again, I just really appreciate all of the hard work and you make such a difference and it shows, so thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shannon, please.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add, we look at call volume and we try to determine.
I was just going to add, we look at call volume and we try to determine, can there be overlap? What hours can we go beyond the 7:00 PM that we currently run right now? But we see a decline towards the end of the day and we're trying to make sense of that because you certainly don't want to come and ask for more services if you're seeing a decline in those numbers. And so I think once we're able to figure that out, what makes sense, we would be coming back with that type of request, but it hasn't happened yet. You're welcome.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all so much for the presentation. I love this program for so many reasons. Outside of my work on council, I also work in behavioral health. And so seeing this sort of program coming to our community and being successful in our community is very, very meaningful. It has been a privilege of mine to have the opportunity to do a ride-along with the CARE Unit and just see firsthand how this service works in our community. And I'm just, I'm very thankful that we've been able to figure out some of the personnel challenges, the enabling of our fire department team to focus in on the work that they are passionate about and focus the resources that can be contributed to this, directly into this program. I think my question has been answered in terms of how you look at the possibility of expanding hours and things like that. I think my other question is what considerations you're making in terms of the expansion of service? And by that, I just mean I'm thrilled to hear about the Ambassador Program. I strongly suspect that that's going to be a program that will be seen as needing to expand. The same goes with the availability of behavioral health specialists and, as you mentioned during the presentation, options that you've seen elsewhere in terms of trained medical personnel who can provide some of those services or even treat minor injuries or give prescriptions. So what does that process look like for this program in terms of the capacity to expand some of those wraparounds that can be provided directly through CARES versus the ones that you identify as perhaps needing to come through external partnerships?
Since I brought up the, thank you for the question, Councilmember House. The, since I spoke on the physician's assistant, this is a model out of the valley where they are able to go out and provide those services. A lot of that comes down to money. It's a very expensive resource to have, very specialized. They have to carry their own insurance. They're not working under any other medical director or supervision. They're kind of a standalone type of person. If that's something that you would like to us to explore and get costs, I can do that. I have resources in the valley that I can reach out to. It would also maybe expand into putting on a second unit, a standalone unit, or some combination out there where they are in charge of maybe the Tarot CMTs and they integrate in with them on certain calls based on what comes through dispatch. There's a lot of options out there and it's kind of what all of you want, but I'd be more than happy to explore those and I can send you updates on that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
And I think.
Well, I just wanted to add that I do think that we run into some problems sometimes with the medical in the field when we do, because we do see people that are fairly intoxicated. So that's something that we would want to keep in mind. And then in terms of the numbers and potentially increasing the hours of the CARE Unit, I anticipate that we will see a little bit of an increase of the utilization of the CARE Unit with the Ambassador Program starting because the CARE Unit will be supporting the Ambassador if they need transport to the shelter or something, so.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was answered, but I just wanted to make a comment. A few weeks ago, I connected an owner of a drug detox and rehab center. He owns facilities in Payson and in Paradise Valley. And we talked about the needs of Flagstaff and he actually was very familiar with Flagstaff and knew why there are obstacles for a rehab center to come up here. But he also came with some short-term and long-term solutions. So I sent a joint email to Chief Connolly because that was, what sparked my interest was his passion for trying to find solutions and stuff. But maybe this is an expanded conversation. Destin is very, I've only met him over the phone, but he's super knowledgeable, already understands our city and our challenges. And one of the short-term solutions was, and he deals mainly with access, that as long as the treatment center's within 100 miles of the person's residence, that the access would cover them. And so then you get into the challenges of, we don't want to bust anybody, right? So how do we overcome that perception or, you know, misconception, but providing an option for someone to go to treatment centers and that's available? So maybe we could get together and I'll have a conversation and brainstorm on a short-term solution and maybe understanding the challenges of a rehab center up in Flagstaff. Lack of insurance coverage is a big one. There's, most insurance providers do not cover our area. So I'd like to get together and just kind of talk and maybe bring him into the fold and let him share his insight and knowledge and see if we could do that because I've heard that for so long. I mean, when I was the interim director at the shelter 11, 12 years ago, we were talking the need for a wet room and the hospital was going to do it. We were going to do it and then nobody did it. And the need hasn't gone away, it's just gotten worse. So I'd like to get together and just continue that conversation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a very valuable presentation and I thank you for that. Given that the Guidance Center here in Flagstaff is our primary mental health provider, I'm troubled by the number of mental health problems your CARES Unit has encountered and the small number of dispositions to the Guidance Center. And I'm wondering, does the Guidance Center take ownership of that? And is there any ongoing discussion about whether the mental health issues that are identified could be handled, could more of them be handled by the Guidance Center?
The Guidance Center is a great resource. However, there is that chance of when we do bring clients to the Guidance Center, since they are not a hospital, there are some services that they cannot do medically. So they run into the challenges of a client having a seizure, going into active withdrawals. So they'll end up having to send them to the hospital. So instead of us taking the client to the Guidance Center, knowing the outcome that they're going to have to go to the hospital, the CARE team will just upgrade that call for them to go to the hospital where that care can be provided instead of having them playing like hot potato with the client. We just send them straight to the hospital where they can get the care they need. And as far as the mental health aspect with the Guidance Center, the Guidance Center takes titles, they take community people coming in, so they are taking on a lot. So we do need another mental health facility. We have only one adolescent facility, so any kid that is feeling suicidal, homicidal, we're sending them down to Phoenix. The same with someone who's struggling with substance use. There are facilities. Transportation is another barrier that we spoke about. So it's just having extra here to support the number of the needs because having two behavioral health facilities cannot carry all of Flagstaff.
Thank you.
I've said it before and I will say it many times, that this would have never happened without the Fire Department being willing to take on something that is so completely new and different from what you were all doing. So thank you very much for that and to continue your guidance and your participation even after we've, you know, we're morphing to a different way of doing it. Just thank you, all of you, because I know that this was a big thing to take on in the midst of what you're already doing. I have a question about the gentleman with the utility bill. And you don't have to say which utility. I want to know if it's the city, though.
I'll have to, can you repeat that again, please?
Yes, you talked about a gentleman that you helped get his bill lowered because he was paying too much. Do you know which utility that was?
Yes, I do.
And was it the city?
Yes.
Okay, but we got it taken care of.
We did get it taken care of. The city did disconnect his utility. It was 5:00 PM, so nothing is open. There's no resources. So the firefighter I was with, I'm just going to say his name, Brandon Roberts, we brainstormed and we called the hotline and we just said, hey, we are with social service and the Fire Department. This client has some medical issues. It's going to be below freezing temperatures tonight. Can you help him? And then they escalated that call to a supervisor. And from a supervisor, they were like, we are so sorry. We have been triple overcharging you, sir. Your bill should be 50 bucks, not 250 bucks. So from there, it was, he was so thankful for the CARE Unit because we were able to provide him food. He had a dog. He locked him in the room while we were there. We were able to provide dog food. We were able to give him so much resources in that short time. They told us that his utilities would not turn on until, for a whole hour. They were on within five minutes while we were there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seth, you mentioned, or one of you in the presentation mentioned that after-hours, you're seeing a reliance on the CARE Unit for food and things like that. Has that reached a point where it's an issue with our dispatch center and something we need to take into consideration as we're planning our steps forward?
Currently, no, not an issue. These are one-offs that we're seeing and our fire crews are showing up and not being able to provide that service that they're looking for. And then we revert back to pre-2022 and they go up to the hospital. We don't want to do that. We want to get ahead of it. And part of the discussion that's going on in dispatch is redefining everything that we go to. And currently working with Chief Connolly, Chief Gaylord through these processes, not a huge issue. I just, it was brought to light in the last six months, some one-offs. Just wanted to get it on there so we can get ahead of it.
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention, Councilmember House and I recently had a meeting with someone from the Phoenix Diocese of the Catholic Church. And his interest in Northern Arizona is on mental health care and on substance use. So if it would be helpful, we could connect you with him. He's, right now, he's just exploring where best to get plugged in in that area, but we could get you connected with him.
Send him our way.
Any additional questions, comments? I think across the board, we love this program and I think that it's one of the best things that the city has brought onboard because it really addresses that persistent issue that we were having. And it's just such a way to treat people with compassion and leave our emergency services for what they need to be doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Council, have a good break.
I think it's really staff that gets the break because they don't see us all the time. Okay, we're moving down to 12 future agenda item requests. The first is a request by Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor this. I'll be brief. I think this is pretty straightforward and if you support it, great. If not, I think there's some other avenues I may be able to discuss procedurally with the mayor directly around how to preside over these things. My request came just a couple of weeks ago. I was thinking about how we're up here and we listen to the public and a lot of the times we're taking significant amounts of time listening to folks who are not city residents, which is fine. I think it's fine that anyone gets to come up here and speak and to do so online when they feel they need to use their free speech and to come before council and we need to hear from them. I just thought it would be beneficial to know when we're talking to a city resident versus someone who's not a resident. I find that information pertinent for a number of reasons. And we can all make that own determination for ourselves, how valuable that is or how necessary. But I wouldn't want to ask for someone's personal address. I think that could be legally problematic and also the unintended consequence of that would be potentially intimidation, which representatives, when they feel they need to, not the opposite. So a better way to put it might be just if public speakers could mention at the beginning of their comments whether they're a resident of the City of Flagstaff. I think that's pertinent information that I would like to just generally have in an ongoing fashion. I think it's a best practice and that's the request. I think, you know, we need three thumbs up for this and then we could have a larger discussion on sort of the specifics, but that's what I'm looking for for tonight. Thank you.
Sterling.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Before you ask whether there's support for that, the fair was for the actual address. That said, if the discussion is to go forward, it would be one where, and I could advise you in executive session on this if necessary, but the actual address would not be advisable. Residents in the city or outside the city could be something that's possible. Thanks.
All right, Council, are there two other thumbs up? All right. All right, the next, the next fair is from Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned when I brought this up, we have two declared emergencies, our climate crisis and our housing shortage crisis. And I just feel that those two issues and emergencies deserve a little bit more detail when we're talking about budget. I came across a number of conversations where I'll ask, how come this isn't being done? Well, we didn't get the staff that we asked for or, you know, we're working on this project. There was just so much more that it'd be nice to know when we're going through the budget retreats to have more detail about what these two departments are doing, what their asks have been, what maybe is not being encouraged to get funded or not. And instead of just giving us the end result, which is a lot of the time we're in budget retreats, we do have some flexibility in giving our input, but we don't have a lot of the backstory that comes with that. And I just think that, you know, I would, for one, like to know more detail. And maybe it's a half-day. I don't know what the departments feel, but I've solicited input, feedback from both housing and sustainability and they were excited to have that possibility. So I'd like to pursue that conversation more.
All right, Council, do we have two other thumbs up?
Thank you very much.
All right. So moving down to open call to the public, I don't see any. Then we have informational two from, and this time I'll start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was on two Teams call. One was provided through the Flynn Brown Foundation. There's a lot of. There's a lot of concerns and, and speculations on budget cuts and stuff. And so we had Beth Kohler from Arizona Association for Health Plans. And she gave a very informative teams lecture, if you will, on the cost of care and what Medicaid cuts mean for Flagstaff and rural Arizona. And it was really helpful to really see those numbers and see, not speculation, but direct impact and, and loss of coverage. And so just trying to stay up on, you know, things that our community could be facing. And then also, as I mentioned before, I'm on the Budget, Finance and Economic Development Committee for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. We had two presentations. One was for TIF, types of incentives for developing for workforce housing. And I was honored to be able to provide the requister in the league with research that my cohorts did last year on that. And the other one was on budget limits, spending limits. So just really informative and I'm, I'm very happy to be involved in those committees because it's very informative and I learn a lot from those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to highlight that I was at an event for firefighters called the House of Jacks. And that's a, a place where young apprentices or people that are interested in becoming a firefighter, either for the city or for one of our surrounding fire departments, can, can come and work out with the, the Fire Department. And I'm not exactly sure when these are held. But if you, if anybody who's interested in becoming a firefighter, join the House of Jacks. Have a day where you work out with the crew, get around the fire equipment, find a mentor, you know? If anybody's interested in working 48 hours on and 96 hours off, which is what I heard, what their schedule is, I'm, I'm interested. I'm just a little too overweight right now. But, but come down to the, contact the Flagstaff Fire Department for a ride-along or get on their Facebook page and look for the House of Jacks, an opportunity for you to make a lucrative living while getting most of your time off, which is cool. And the rest of the time, you'll be helping out the community, making sure to keep us safe and healthy. Also, anybody that likes to ride motorcycles, on July 26th, we're all meeting up at Bun Huggers at 9:00 in the morning to make sack lunches for the homeless folks. The company, the nonprofit's called Rev Up Unity. It's run by Anthony Sanchez. And all folks on two wheels are welcome to show up and help out. And once we make the sandwiches and stuff, once we make the sack lunches, we're going to cruise all over the city on our motorcycles and pass them out. So show up on July 26th at Bun Huggers at 9:00 AM to help feed our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you. I hope you all have a wonderful two-month break and I hope you guys enjoy your break from us. Just a couple of quick things. This past week, I went to a meeting put on by the Flagstaff Water Group. There were several councilmembers there, there were several former councilmembers there. There was some city leadership there and our Water Services Director as well. I was very pleased at how well-represented the city was at this, at this ad hoc little Delta Force meeting regarding BioChar. Really, really nice for the water group, I think, to see that level of support, to feel that they're being heard. And it's just really encouraging. I don't know how far that project is going to go or how scalable it is. But just really nice to know, by the way, how interested our city leadership is in our water future. The other thing I wanted to mention, I, I've been bugging Greg about this for a while and he was, he was finally able to set it up. I'm very grateful that I was able to take Ryan Rizondo and Lee Williams, our Water Director, out to Red Gap Ranch to tour the landscape out there. Ryan and I took a ton of photos. He is our Flagstaff City Film Commissioner. And it's just an opportunity for him to get those landscapes and a lot of great potential post-apocalyptic Western and just historical on-location backlot areas put down in the database. People come to Ryan all the time with requests wanting to film, usually car commercials and shoe commercials. But there's other opportunities as well. And Red Gap, if you haven't been out there, you definitely got to get out there sometime. It's, it's not all that interesting from a water perspective. There's a couple wellheads that, that shoot out of the ground every five square miles. Not much to see there, but it's, it's actually a really beautiful varied landscape. That's, that's just pretty cool to be on and lots of great birding out there, too, by the way. It's long been my vision that Red Gap can be used as a city resource, not just for solar, not just for water, not just for solar or gardening, et cetera, cattle ranching, what have you. But as a, a, a significant revenue generator through attracting film projects out here. We don't have a lot of places in the city where we, where we're in control and we can say, hey, Tom Cruise, you can use this downtown area for, you know, jumping off a building or something. But we, we do have complete control over Red Gap and it's one of the ways I would like to encourage us to think of using it as a resource. I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I have a couple of things. I do want to do a thank you to the Sustainability Team. Mobile Haven has had a vacant lot that has been overgrown for a few years and we did a cleanup out there. I was not able to attend, I was out of town. But I heard it was a great turnout by sustainability and community members and that parcel is now fire-wise. Yesterday was asteroid day and I was honored to read the proclamation out at Lowell. And great attendance and, and very cool thing to celebrate. Friday's a big day for us. It's not only Art Walk Downtown, but it is the Fourth of July and City Council does have a spot in the parade. The decoration time starts at 7:30 and we are staging. And I'll have it emailed out. We're on hunt between Humphreys and Beaver. And if you can come help decorate, thank you to Public Works for donating the truck and the driver. That's amazing and it should be a fun time. Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I also was able to attend that presentation from the Flagstaff Water Group. Very interesting information on the application of BioChar. I believe Councilmember Matthews and I may have attended the same Flynn Foundation webinar on the cost of Medicaid cuts in, and the impacts for Arizona. So that was definitely very insightful presentation. And one of the questions that I asked at the end of that was just specifically on how we can distribute that information to our community and, and let them fully understand the implications or the impacts for our, our local areas. As an offshoot of that, I was also able just yesterday? I'm on vacation from my other job, so I don't know what day it is anymore. But yesterday evening, there was a presentation with the State of the People on the implications of not only Medicaid cuts, but other things that are coming up at the federal level. And so I was asked to speak about the implications of the Big Beautiful Bill, Medicaid cuts, public land sales, et cetera, to Northern Arizona and rural areas of Arizona and the Southwest. So was honored to be able to, to do that presentation. And also last week, participated in a conversation with the Real Council under the, the National League of Cities, where we heard from the CEO of the National League on just some of the implications of what's happening at the federal level on cities and their ability to serve communities that are both diverse culturally and idealistically. So just really interesting conversations that I had the opportunity, opportunity to be part of. And if I can take just a personal point of privilege, I would also like to give a little shout out to, tomorrow is my nephew Roman's eighth, seventh birthday. So happy birthday to Roman.
Councilmember Spence?
I, I have registered to attend the Morrison Institute for Public Policy in Phoenix in, in, it's a day and a half seminar in August. So I will be able to provide a, a report back to the council on what I learned at that institute. That's all I have.
Thank you for attending that, it's a really great thing. I think Councilmember Matthews and I ended up going to that when we were first on council, I want to say. But it's really, really useful. I want to congratulate United Way for their 20th year of Kinder Camp and their partnership with CCC and NAU. So now every, every young person going through Kinder Camp is guaranteed free tuition at CCC and NAU. And Liz Archuleta is working on how United Way can kind of stay with that student throughout their elementary and middle and high school years to help provide resources and information to the families to, to make sure that the, the student is ready to go to college or technical school when they leave. And this morning, the Senate passed their version of HR1 and it's headed back to the House where they need to reconcile. And it does have significant negative impacts for people's healthcare and, and through Medicaid and also the exchange. And I am someone who has received insurance through the exchange at several times in my life. And without the ability to access that insurance, I would have had no insurance. So I'm very, very concerned. And I have been working with the Flagstaff Family Food Center to assess the impacts on Northern Arizona. And we co-wrote an op-ed together. And at that point, this was with the bill that was coming through the House in Congressional District 2, which is what we're in. It was estimated that about 25,000 people are at risk to lose some SNAP benefits while an additional 14,000 are at risk to lose all of their SNAP benefits. And one important thing and, and something that really speaks to me is that SNAP, qualifying for SNAP is one way that students qualify for free and reduced lunch and breakfast. And the thought of children not being able to access food at school is heartbreaking to me. And I have to give thanks to, to Congressman Crane's Chief of Staff, who made time to speak to me and to Summer from the Flagstaff Family Food Center today to try to, to share that information about what the impacts would be to Northern Arizona. And I appreciate that he was willing to turn that around so quickly and give her a couple of minutes of time to make the case. So that's all that I have. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to pass on the great news that we appointed Michelle McNulty as our Planning and Development Services Director. I don't know if she's still in the room, but we're so excited to have her onboard. I had my first meeting with her today and it was pretty much non-stop. So I'm very excited about her energy and what she's going to bring to this position.
Anything else from the team? All right, well, we are adjourned.